I'm here. All right, we have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report, so we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:16 PM. And now, I will call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. It is 6:16 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The speaking of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is being closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, March 14th at 2:30 PM and Sunday, April 16th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.ekelgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrokable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Pardon me. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. Note that pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. With that, Mayor, we will move on to the roll call. And I will start the roll call with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suwen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies. And Mayor Singh Allen. All members are present.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to call on Mr. Larry Sahoda, I believe you're here, to help lead us in the pledge this evening. All right, thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. All right, thank you. May I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, item number three, our closed session.
For the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda. That will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week.
All right, wonderful. Assisting will be our Vice Mayor Spies. If you want to read, and then this will be presented to our volunteers in police services, if you all want to come up. And our Vice Mayor will read the presentation.
Great, okay. Give them a couple of minutes to come on up here. All right. Thank you for being with us today. Let's see, so, the National Volunteer Week, April 16 through 22, 20, excuse me, 22, 2023, with special recognition to volunteers in public service. Now, the National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 with a presidential executive order, and it has continued since then. Volunteerism historically reflects the highest values of our democratic society, and in that, regardless of that situation, station, age, race, creed, all may volunteer and reap the rich rewards that come from giving aid to others. Now, the Elk Grove Police Department Volunteer in Police Services are a valued team of trained citizen volunteers who have been assisting the Elk Grove Police Department since 2006. And I'm going to read all of these stats, because these are important. In 2022, volunteers in police services donated a total of 6,583 hours of service, answered 6,119 telephone calls in the service center, removed 1,007 illegally posted signs, provided 117 fingerprint cards, issued 406 disabled parking enforcement citations, and provided 1,797 security vacation checks. So the volunteers in police services, they're celebrating 29 years of serving the Elk Grove community. And again, the volunteers in police services have donated over 246,561 hours of service since 1994. So, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the week of April 16 through April 22nd, 2023, as a National Volunteer Week, and pays special tribute to the dedicated service and support provided by the volunteers in police services.
Would either of you like to say something, and then we'll come down and present this to you formally?
This is, I just completed my first year, actually, in the long year, and it's just been an honor to support our community. I'm a life member, lifelong resident of Elk Grove, and we've been able to help our neighbors safely stay in places they need to when their parents have passed unnecessarily or unexpectedly. And so they've reassured that we help them keep them safe with their homes, so we do vacation checks, so it's just an honor.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll come down there and present this, oh, sir.
I'd just like to say thank you for the recognition from the city council. I've been here for 29 years, of those 29 years, so it's a place worth a lot of different areas.
You're OG. (laughter)
Do we have a...
Will it come out?
What?
Oh, those other things?
29 years.
Gotcha. All right, thank you for that. Next up is a proclamation recognizing April as Donate Life Month, and presenting that will be Councilmember Brewer.
Good evening, how are you guys doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good, good. So our proclamation for Donate Life Month, April 2023, one organ donor hero can save the lives of eight people through the donation of organs, and improve the lives of up to 75 people with eye and tissue donation. More than 107,000 patients continue to wait for life-saving organ transplants on the national waitlist, including 1,500 in our service area. Sierra Donor Services serves the Northern California and Northern Nevada communities, and is the center of a dynamic interconnected system supporting donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers in the vital mission of saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation. In 2022, Sierra Donor Services, for the second year in a row, and through a pandemic, facilitated the transplant of 401 organs, saving more lives than ever before, thanks to the selfless generosity of 153 organ donors and 881 tissue donors. Californians can register to be donors regardless of their age or medical history, and registering to become an organ and tissue donor can be done on a driver's license or ID card at the Department of Motor Vehicles, or online at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. In honoring all those who have given the extraordinary gift of life through giving and deceased donation, it is encouraged to open conversations about giving the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2023 as Donate Life Month in the City of Elk Grove to offer an opportunity to focus attention on the great need for more registered organ, eye, and tissue donors in the greater Sacramento region, in California, and across the nation. Signed on this day, April 12th, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[646.73][646.73](applause)
And with us this evening, we have representatives from Sierra Donor Services, if you would like to say something.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kyla Aquino Irving, External Affairs Director of Sierra Donor Services. And not only that, I'm a proud product of the Elk Grove School District, and I'm also a two-time kidney transplant recipient myself. I'm here with two people who represent our community, specifically to show you those statistics have faces, they have names and people in our local region. Lemomi Mabanta here next to me is actually waiting for a kidney, so she's a blood type O, if anyone is interested, I'm just putting it out there. And Vince Salis, his mother is on dialysis right now, so our community, we don't have to look very far to see the faces of these statistics. I'm proud to say that in the last year, that since I stood here last year, Mayor Bobby Singh Allen has helped us by endorsing organ donation, and we've already seen an increase in who says yes on the organ donor waiting list. Specifically, communities of color have been really challenging, but I'm proud to say we've seen higher authorization rates across the board in Latino, African-American, and Asian numbers, which is huge for us. But the work is not done yet, we're not at 100% yeses yet, so I hope I can partner with all of you to talk to people about saying yes, it doesn't cost you anything. There are a lot of myths and misconceptions that you can bust on your own by going to donatelifecalifornia.org, and there you can register. So I implore you all, everyone watching and everyone here, to please consider saving a life, because we're right here, the lives that you save are right here in your own backyard.
Thank you, it's so important and so powerful. I would love to invite you to some of my places of worship, that I go to different Sikh temples, to bring more awareness, because I still know that as much as, you know, I've supported the campaign and have shared it through different measures, it's not enough. And all of you, through your respective channels, not only, you know, the, just the vast network, I know that particularly with the API community, we are so far behind, and we really, we can save so many lives, but the main thing is just making sure that we educate people, because there are a lot of misconceptions, as you said, so I look forward to continuing to partner with you, and thank you so much for all the great work you do in the community.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We'll calm down? Sure.
Just got a quick one, there's a second Elk Grove Unified School District graduate, Lemomi Mabanta.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. She and Angelo went to high school together, they graduated just a few short years ago, so, very, very short, I won't give you a time.
Right, I'm around that era.
Yeah. They're both very young.
Just gave my age away.[834.19][834.19](laughter)
Would you hold this in a picture?
Sure, thank you.
Would you mind holding this for the picture?
Absolutely, thank you.
I thought that was...
I know.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to hold this. You hold that, or...
I'm helping, I'm helping.
Come stand here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since he's probably going to hold this with me. Here, did everyone get one?
Got it.
Vince has, we always have to have like a fun photo. Well, you're the recipient, but that's okay.[867.01][867.01](laughter) All right, here we go. Do you want to pretend to hold it with you? Oh, there we go. I know how this works. All right, ready all? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think we have a same recipient, so we'll speak.
I'll give you one back.
Yeah, please, take him, thank you.
So nice to meet you, Darren.
Good to meet you. And I hope that we can work together.
I'd love to, yeah.
Thank you.
You like that?
All right, next item is our Trails Committee Annual Report presentation by Mark Mendenhall, the Chair. How are you?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Let me get my program up here. Glasses help? Getting old? That works. Slide show? No? Slide show, where's slide show? I just got to figure out. Thought we had this, now I can't even find it. Okay, we're ready to go. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, new council members and returning council members, thank you for having me. This is our committee today. We added two members, I believe I was here last October, and Sherry and Chris were both on the committee at that point. Sharon is here tonight, my number one supporter. This is what we do, we provide input and direction on CIP and planning projects and a vision for future active transportation in our city. Tonight, I'll talk on a key portion of a longer view of our vision and what it might take to get there. Last year, staff organized, and I led, along with the members of our committee, to well-received city staff bike rides to different parts of the city. We plan to do a third ride on May 10th to the Northern Laguna, including the Lower Laguna Creek area and the Ryland Trail. We'll travel along Laguna Creek and the new extension at Sheldon Farms North. There will be plenty of interpretive stops to point out cycling highlights and improvement opportunities. Kaylee Lyons, our Senior Transportation Manager, has taken responsibility for our committee and our activities, including this ride. I believe, she's still hiding back there in the back room. We created our Minor CIP Project Recommendation Log in 2019 to help staff and prioritize small projects that have a big impact on trail usability. This is our list, there's no need to read it here. We hope to complete four projects by year end this year. As part of this project, each recommendation is accompanied by a write-up featuring maps, aerials, pictures of the issues, and what it might look like when altered. Majority of these items are curb cuts, ramps, realignments. We, of course, would like to see all of these implemented sooner than later, as they will go a long way to make our trails safer and more usable. Speaking of Sheldon Farms, Sheldon Farms Development, located at Sheldon and Bruceville, adjacent to Winco, has constructed a critical connection for our Laguna Creek Trail and connects to the Elk Grove Creek Trail as well. Magenta Line is the newly created trail. Here is the before, during, and current condition, taken from the Lewis Stein Bridge. This is another picture along the trail. Elimination of nefarious activity underneath the Bruceville and Lewis Stein Bridges is anticipated when the trail is fully open to the public. There are several CIP widening improvement projects underway on the eastern side of the city. This is the renovated Waterman Road Corridor, South upon Road. We've added bike lanes, pavement, the fog lane actually stays on the pavement now, which is good. And we have the continuation of the Laguna Creek Trail south of the Oasis Park and Poppy Ridge beginning to take shape. This will eventually go all the way down to Camera Road. City of Elk Grove's Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Master Plan provides a conceptual multimodal planning foundation for the City of Elk Grove and adjacent communities. This grant-funded project will aid the city in coordinating projects within the city, the City of Sacramento, and the county, and supports Elk Grove's goals to improve connectivity throughout the city's network of trails. The plan should further the information process going forward. Major trail projects needed toward completion of the regional trail include the Laguna Creek Trail Camden-North spur to East Stockton Boulevard, which is in design phase now, and the pedestrian bridge over 99 at Camden, from Camden to West Stockton Boulevard. These are major projects and essential connectors. And, late breaking news, our city was recently awarded $6.8 million to complete these trail projects, including the bridge over State Route 99. The fully funded project is moving ahead with completion anticipated in early 2027. This is big, really big, as 25 foot say. The extension of the paved portion of Elk Grove Creek Trail from Emerald Vista Drive to Elk Grove Florin Road near Elk Grove High School is long overdue and is considered part of this master plan, pictured here in yellow. The connection to, of what is now the end of the Laguna Creek Trail at Waterman Road to the trail beginning at Sierra River Drive is needed to reach all the way to Bradshaw Road. This involves two bridge under crossings and surface trails provided by the city, and a surface trail along Laguna Creek provided by development called Creekside Estates, and that's on your agenda tonight, by the way. City pieces are in orange, developer is in magenta, and the existing trails are in yellow, so you can see that it's a critical connection. The developer for Creekside Estates has requested a time extension for the project, we hope this moves forward as planned and previously approved soon. Connectivity and safe trails, we hear it every time we ask, and what's needed to increase trail use and reduce vehicle trips. We are working every day to fulfill this vision. Our connected network is expanding. Standing in our way is one freeway, 99, and two railroad corridors that are difficult obstacles to get around. Suburban design of the past usually included vehicular mobility, but rarely considered other active transportation alternatives, let alone safe and separated trails. Let's take a closer look at the UP Railroad Corridor through Old Elk Grove as our example today. We have two existing bike and pedestrian crossings at the red arrows, the Laguna Creek Trail under crossing and the Grant Line Road over crossing. We will need three more to accomplish trail connectivity through the corridor. Strawberry, White House, and Elk Grove Creeks have planned trail crossings at the yellow arrows. We can see the railroad crossing at Elk Grove Creek, magenta in the center, there it is, connects to two sides of the city, for perspective, yeah, okay. All of the new development along Waterman and Grant Line is dependent on this crossing to connect to and become part of the rest of the city. All of the orange are existing trails ready to go, the yellow needs only to be paved. This is the Creek, the Elk Grove Creek at the tracks today. We can go over, we can go under, or across at grade. The cost of the bridges is high, and there's difficulty for every user to climb the long ramps. Going under involves minimal clearances and residual water and residue issues, and at grades involves, at grade involves resistant railroad. This is an at-grade crossing along the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail in Sacramento City. It can be done. The key is to commit to connectivity and start the process sooner than later. Another topic, the anti-trash volunteer team has been cleaning up our trails and creeks, roadways every Saturday since early 2020. Committee member Sharon Anderson has been very active in organizing and helping each week. We thank all the participants, especially the Irons family and Brett Bartholomew for their awesome support. Keep in mind, this group collects everything, often it involves camping gear, sleeping bags, furniture, carpet, food containers, construction trash, illegal dumps, you name it. They have made our city a much, much better place to live, thank you. The use of powered mobility equipment is exploding in our city. We are seeing everything on our trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, including golf carts, ATV's, gas-powered equipment, and all varieties of ADA mobility devices. Our current policy is no motorized vehicles on the trails. We need to commit to making a better policy. Almost done. Grants, federal and state, regional, are leveraged with city matching funds to advance trail priorities. We now have a Senior Transportation Manager, Kaylee, for our, to further our cause, thank you for allowing us to have her. Stuff for all of us to work on are safer bikeways, intersections, keeping our trails and open spaces safe, and inviting for our residents and getting it right the first time. COVID brought us many changes to our daily lives. One positive was the need to get outside. This is along Elk Grove Creek. Thank you, comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mendenhall, for that excellent annual update. I just want to thank you and all of our committee members for keeping Elk Grove beautiful and connected. The trails are a quality-of-life element to our amazing city, so we just thank you for the work that you do. I have a quick question on one of your slides, on the motorized vehicles. You had said something, are you, did you mention, or did you suggest that you would like to see that, the current policy revised?
Well, I'm not sure that we have a stated policy, per se. This is the sign that's both CSD and city have put this sign up. To me, a motor is anything that is driven by something other than somebody pedaling. So, you know, that in itself, I mean, we're talking electric or gas, you know, I think we could, but we just, we need to distinguish, you know? We have a speed limit on the trails of 15 miles an hour, and that's okay, but there are plenty of e-bikes now that will exceed that substantially. We see them on the trail. You know, it goes all the way down to somebody using a, you know, an elderly person on an electric scooter, you know? I mean, I don't think we can ban those, per se, and they're on the trail. I was following one gentleman, he had, you know, a fancy scooter, and it looked kind of like a Harley, and he was going, I think around 22, somewhere like that. I was following him along, and he went up the bridge and kind of, okay, you know? But, you know, we just see all kinds of things out there, and, you know, the one on the upper left is an all-terrain skateboard that's electric. You know, we see them off going out through the weeds and everywhere else, so, you know, I think we just need to take a look. The last couple of years, I've suggested a more regional approach, but I think, you know, that doesn't seem like anything's moving in that direction, so I think we need to address that within the city, to some kind of limit. There are, not to get too detailed here, but there are three kinds of e-bikes, class one, two, and three. Class one is what they call a pedal assist and has no throttle, so you have to pedal in order to move along, and you have a dial that will set how much assist you get. Usually, they'll cap out at about 15 miles an hour. A class two has a throttle, so you don't even need to pedal, you just get on and go, much like a motorcycle, but it's electric. And a class three is a flat-out electric motorcycle.
Sure.
So, you know, where do you want to draw the line? I think a lot of jurisdictions are going with class one on trails, not two and three. You know, those kinds of things, it's just what we need to, you know, we got to get together and figure this out.
So would this be unusual to have the Trails Committee look at it, or where would, what, where would this be best suited to look at possible updates?
Staff could review it, and then it would go to the Trails Committee for review and comment.
Would there be an interest to see this examined?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And there would be. My only caution in it is that the American River Bike Trail has become horrible.
Yeah.
For walkers, joggers.
Yeah.
Because of the bike situation, that has to be addressed. The speeding is absolutely horrible, it is terrible to walk on the American River Bike Trail. I would absolutely hate to see that happen here.
Yeah, and from a biker's point of view, you have a, you know, we call them, you know, dog walker ahead, as we call out as we're riding along, and oftentimes, it's a 20-foot leash, and the dog's over here, and the walker's over here.
Right, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of malfeasance to go around, for sure, but...
You know, there's a level of courtesy, there are signs that are available that kind of spell out, you know, in a pictorial kind of way, you know, there's all kinds of things we can do to kind of educate everybody on... you know, in, in a pictorial kind of way, you know, there's all kinds of things we can do to kind of educate everybody on, on that sort of thing.
Personal responsibility.
Just real quick, if I may jump in here, this is a regulatory sign, so it's likely something exists in our code, prohibiting the motorized vehicles. We certainly don't want to eliminate these users from the trail, so thinking something along the lines of better ways to enforce the speed limit, uh, would, would be most helpful. So, education, of course, would be our first avenue by putting up additional signs, um, and we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, I'd be interested to get just some additional feedback based on some of the comments. Definitely, so that next year you can say that we did look at it.
I think this is your number three on, on here, yeah.
I don't want it to just sit here in a report.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, because from a, from a pedestrian standpoint, as many people are going to start walking on these pathways, because we're going to get more people, especially as the trails become more interconnected.
Yep.
Like the, like the little one-wheel surfboard looking item, the hoverboard. More, more people, more youth and, and adults are actually using the hoverboards. And from a safety standpoint, if people aren't careful, they can get ran over. And so, it's ve, it's very important that we have signage and some safety, um, signage along the way, along the pathway, because at that stage, we're just self-governing ourselves at that stage.
Yep.
A P D will not be out there riding the trails and issuing tickets or warnings. It's, it's self-regulation at that, at that stage. So, we got to do everything we can to make sure that we have the right precautions out there, so when people are out there enjoying the trails, whether they're riding a hoverboard, a scooter, or walking, that they know the rules of, of, of the, of the trails, so to speak.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to, Mark, I just want to thank you and Sharon, Chris, Sherry, Mark Doty, for your tireless efforts and advocacy for the trails, and happy that we're, we're able to actually give you some, you know, trails to chime in on. It's taken a long time, I know. You guys have been involved, you know, since early in the city's incorporation, and we were still kind of getting things going, um, so, thank you.
We, we feel like things are going better than they have.
Yeah.
You know, Sharon and I both have over twenty years of, of watching it, so
Right.
We're, uh, we're, we're pleased. That's good, and, and thank you for your support. It's, it's helpful, and, and we got some big ones coming now.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from colleagues? All right, well, thank you so much for your report.
You're welcome.
Have a great evening.
All right, you too.
All right, next up is public comment. We have two people signed up. We'll start with Sharon Anderson, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and Vice Mayor Spees, neighbor of mine. First off, I want to thank Kristen Lawrence. Sorry. Hello, and other council members. If you're my neighbor, you get the special treatment.
I thought that was maybe a reminder or maybe a threat. What you were going to say was important to me being a neighbor.
Not at all. Um, okay, so I get extra two seconds here. Um, I really want to thank Kristen Lawrence and all of you for holding the volunteer appreciation event that really touched my heart, was totally unexpected. As you know, volunteers volunteer because they want to and not because of recognition. You know, some folks say they can't wait to get out of here, and then there are those of us that say, well, we're going to make it better, and we're going to make that place that other people want to get to. And so, just got to thank you for recognizing that, and thank you for Chris, Kristen, for, you know, throwing in the brainchild of all of that. We will stay and we will work hard underneath it all to continue to make Elk Grove, you know, like the best place that you want to move to, Bay Area people. Sorry. A second subject is, and I can't wait for the code enforcement spring cleanup. So, I know Rosa is, and her staff are chomping at the bit. Hopefully she's a little better, more fully staffed, because I'll tell you what, I'm really tired of seeing blue, green, and black sitting out front along people's driveways, and that's the three colors of our garbage cans, right? We have a code that says they have to be out of sight, or at least in a side yard tucked away. We have way too many residents that put their trash in the front. We've got to get a hold of blight. In order to be that city that you want to move to, our blight has to decrease, and there are pockets of blight, and I hope to goodness that Rosa finds them all and her staff finds them all and starts making those changes, because see, click, fix, you can only, as a resident, I can only do that job so much until I get exhausted. You know, we have a lot of people that do put all their, like, all their garbage that they've collected in their garages is now in the front of their homes, and I don't want to see that necessarily, and I also don't want to see black, green, blue, except on garbage days. Third item, C O Ps and future zoning. A closer look at the types of businesses such as furniture stores that unpack outdoors and scatter their material everywhere, otherwise known as styrofoam corridor, you know what I'm talking about? We need to think about the types of businesses going where. They need to have places, I don't care what kind of business. If they're going to be doing an unpacking situation, they need to be able to unpack inside of a facility so their stuff doesn't spread all over the place, otherwise known as Home Depot, um, the furniture store on Elk Grove Boulevard, those sorts of things. So, I would tell our, our planners, when you're doing your due diligence and saying yes to a place, part of the yes has to include a safe location where they can unpack materials, or that they have to daily clean up their materials so they don't go all over the place. Last is our repairing corridors. Um, we need to look at enhancing versus detracting our repairing corridors. I don't know what's left in our general plan where we haven't already allowed zoning by right, but there needs to be something different than to enha, think, oh, well, okay. See ya.
Thank you, Sharon, as always. Um, next up, we have Lynn Wheat, and that will be our final public comment speaker unless somebody else turns in a blue card.
And Ms. Wheat had submitted a PowerPoint presentation for visual aids to accompany her comments tonight, so we'll be pulling those up as we pull up Lynn Wheat's comments, so.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You are all my neighbors. History has a way of repeating itself. In preparation for item eight point one, I'm going to share with you my institutional knowledge of the city's decision in addressing our housing needs. The slides I'm presenting are the Ridge Apartments along Civic Center Drive. This two-hundred-and-four-unit affordable apartment project was approved by the city council in December of two thousand ten with a specific plan amendment, rezone, and design review. I want to share from the resolution the following finding and evidence statement. Findings: Significant changes to the character of the community have occurred subsequent to the adoption of the specific plan which warrants amendments as requested. The market evidence: The market demand for housing has diminished due to the current economic environment. The proposed specific plan amendment and rezone from R D thirty to R D twenty will provide for affordable housing units within the city in the current economic climate. After this project approval and the tax-exempt bonds and financial funding was settled, the applicant returned to the city council a year later for another design change. And so, it is evident from the slide, when they brought forth, what they brought forth, and what was eventually built are very different. This project became less than. The developer committed to one project and built another after receiving the approval of financing by our Affordable Housing Committee. Sadly, I was at the committee meeting and heard another developer applicant state that the project as submitted by Anton could not be built as submitted. That developer applicant was correct. It could not be built as promised. I believe our leaders' vision is limited to the developers' need for profit without even a thought about the long-term negative impacts or costs to our residents. This is an example. By allowing the rezone, we lost affordable housing units and met a developer need. By reducing our design standards and not holding the developer to the commitment they made, we get less. We became an easy target within the developer community. Our leaders bought the lie. Can't build quality in Elk Grove, it costs too much. These are the same developers that somehow managed to build it better elsewhere in Sacramento and Placer County. This was a bait-and-switch project, as many have been, been in our city. Lastly, this developer wanted the down zone because otherwise he would have had to provide four-story units and would have been required by law to put an elevator in each, each of those buildings, and it would have cost him more. So, um, if Jason, if you can put the last slide up. So, this is what we have now.
Thank you. Okay, that is our final speaker for public comment. So, I will close the public comment opportunity and move on to item number six, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. A few items to report on this evening. First is this Saturday, we have our Family Fun Day. The Youth Commission will host this from noon to four o'clock at Old Town Plaza. Lots of games, fun, food. Please come out and bring your family. As part of their Refuel Your Fun campaign, the Recycling and Waste Team will host a one-pound propane cylinder trade-in event next Saturday, April twenty-second, from nine A M. to one P M. At the Special Waste Collection Center, Elk Grove residents can receive a free refillable one-pound propane cylinder when they bring an empty disposable cylinder to trade. Disposable cylinders are commonly used for camping and outdoor cooking. This event is part of a regional effort to reduce waste and encourage the purchase of reusable cylinders. Brew Fest is back. Elk Grove Brew Fest will make its return for the sixth year next Saturday, April twenty-second, from two to six P M. at Elk Grove Park. The city and C S D partner with Beers and SAC to host this event that spotlights local brewers. Tickets are still available and can be purchased online from Beers and SAC website. The city is looking at potential locations for installing new community-serving electric vehicle charging stations. A new online survey is asking residents to submit their suggestions and pin preferred E V facility or charging sites by Monday, May fifteenth. Details are available on the city's website. And finally, the city recently submitted three congressional appropriation community project requests to Congresswoman Matsui. Of the hundred-and-fifty requests that she received within her district, all three of the city's requests made it into her top fifteen project list and have been advanced to the Appropriations Committee. Our request would support the addition of E V charging stations, enhance intervention services to prevent domestic violence, and support added connectivity on Elk Grove's trails. This is the beginning of a year-long process, and staff will provide periodic updates as things progress. The full list of projects can be found on Congresswoman Matsui's website, and that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you for that excellent update. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. We will move on to our consent calendar items. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up. Oh, wait, yes, I do. Yes. Wait a minute, I just skipped that. We have Ms. Wheat for item seven point one-three.
The city purchased this boarded-up property in two thousand seventeen with plans for supportive, permanent, senior housing. It is unfortunate that there was only one bidder and such low interest on bidding on the project. How about considering approaching this project with a different approach, through a step process? How about a contract bid to consider the demolition of the fungal mold contamination and remediation? Get this specific work completed first. After this work is completed, put another bid package together as this may open the door to more contractors bidding the project. Another consideration: Knowing that there are not enough construction workers, how about considering getting C R C involved as our community college has construction programs? This would offer an opportunity to our local community students. I am supportive of getting this supported, permanent housing done, and I am confident that the public work staff can come up with a positive, innovative way to get this done sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for consent calendar, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And unless council has any questions, uh, look for a motion, please.
Motion, move, consent?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, item eight point one.
An eight point one is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving a design review amendment and density bonus with an incentive concession for reduced development standards for the Poppy Grove Apartments Amendment Project. Uh, Mr. Kirchgessner, it should be on the desktop, so if you navigate.
I made a slight revision, so I'm going to pull up a new version. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Sarah Kirchgessner, Senior Planner in the Planning Division. The proposed Poppy Grove Apartments Amendment Project consists of a major design review amendment for the previously approved Poppy Grove Apartments project to modify the floor plans, elevations, and site plan. The project also includes a density bonus with an incentive concession for reduced development standards related to the Elk Grove Design Guidelines standards for mass, scale, and form. The city council approved the Poppy Grove Apartments project in May of two thousand twenty-two, and it included a major design review with deviations for a new three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-unit apartment development to be constructed in three phases, as well as a tentative parcel map, density bonus for reduced parking, and a tree removal permit. According to the applicant, the units are primarily targeting to low-income households, as well as a few of the units targeted to extremely low and very low-income households. The project final map subdividing the site into three parcels has been approved and recorded, and the city is currently reviewing the revised building permit plans as well as the improvement plans. The project site is located within the Laguna Ridge specific plan area, Zoned R D thirty. It's located on the east side of Bruceville Road, just south of Poppy Ridge Road. It is identified in the city's housing element for a site selected to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation unit count for low-income residential development. According to the applicant, due to financial reasons, a major design review amendment is being requested to modify the approved plans. The overall unit count will remain the same. The proposed modifications include removal of the balconies and private patios, changes to the project's exterior materials and entry features, as well as removal of some of the site amenities, including the swimming pool and the outdoor sports court, to be replaced by lawn. The proposed tot lots will remain. Here is the revised site plan showing a portion of the site, showing with the pool and the revised plan showing the lawn. In regards to the elevations, consistent with the Housing Accountability Act, the project was reviewed solely against the objective standards in the Elk Grove Municipal Code and the Design Guidelines. The proposed replacement of the swimming pool and sports court is consistent with these objective standards. However, the removal of the balconies and porches result in building elevations that do not meet the minimum requirements, two of the required design solutions that are required as an objective standard in the Elk Grove Design Guidelines for massing, scale, and form. The applicant is requesting approval of a density bonus incentive concession for relief from this objective standard. Here is the originally approved elevation for one of the buildings, Building A, and this shows the revised proposed elevation of the same building. And here is the original and revised, um, design shown side by side. As you can see, the balconies have been reviews removed from the original approval. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a density bonus for relief from the objective standard related to massing, scale, and form. A density bonus aims to provide incentives for housing for very low-income, lower-income, and moderate-income households in the city. Pursuant to the municipal code and the government code, the project is eligible for four incentives. They already had one approved as part of the previous project, so they are eligible for three additional incentive concessions. According to the applicant, the project has been impacted by the increase of interest rates and construction costs. Pursuant to the municipal code as well as the density bonus law, the city shall grant the incentive unless they are able to make certain written findings based on evidence in the record that the concession or incentive is not required in order to provide for affordable housing costs, that the incentive or concession would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment, and the concession or incentive would be contrary to state or federal law. Since none of these deterrent findings can be made for the proposed request, the density bonus with an incentive concession the density bonus with an incentive concession should be approved. No further environmental review is required. Staff recommends finding the project exempt from CEQA, no further environmental review, and that the, to approve the design review amendment and density bonus incentive concession. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for question. The applicant team is also available.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Steng Allen, and members of the City Council. Reese Jarrett, I'm a partner in Poppy Grove Development Partners. And before you today to have this matter, as presented by staff, approved regarding the design amendments for Poppy Grove Development. As was stated, this is a significant affordable housing development that came together in a perfect storm in the summer and fall of last year. We had commitments from the state for funding. We had construction and equity financing lining up, and interest rates started to spike. Construction costs were spiraling, and we had a deadline in mid-September that we had to close, or the project would not go forward. Coupled with that, there were several negotiations with the city that led to additional fees that we were not aware of at the time, but we were able to work through that. The closing became dependent upon actually acquiring third-party financing that became very onerous to us, but allowed us to bring this development forward and close and provide the financing to begin the construction. But in that process, we had to look closely at the cost to build the project so we could bring the budget in line with closing our financing. And part of that value engineering included some of the design elements that you see before you that have been amended. And we come before you today, as soon as those changes have been completed, to have you review them. And we are exercising, as you're aware, per staff's recommendation, the density bonus provision to have these changes approved. I think it's important to note that this development is 387 units. They're family-oriented development with 74 one-bedrooms, 151 two-bedrooms, and 163 three-bedrooms. The development includes a full electric and solar, fully solar complementary development that will be an asset to the tenants by lowering their utility costs. All the units have washers and dryers in them. There are no, there's no requirement for the families to take their bundle of clothes and the kids down to a common facility to do their laundry. It's available inside. The units are spacious and oriented towards families. I think that what we've done here is we've electrified the entire development. It's all-electric, and that will also assist in the utility cost to the tenants. There is 14,000 square feet of common area space that will be programmed throughout the development, and there's over 57,000 square feet of outdoor space, which, by the way, meets your open space requirements under your design standards. I think it's important, and my partner, Michael Johnson, is going to speak to some of the more detailed issues related to the design review. But what we have done is committed ourselves to work with the city to talk about ways in which we can continue to enhance the development and work on how that revised enhancement will be financed and take place. And we want to partner with the city to see that happen. And I think it's important to understand that we're doing this as a partner, that we want to be a good citizen, that this project development, rather, I don't like to use the word project, is important to us. And what we feel is important for us to bring a quality development to the city. So we would urge you to approve this. We also would like to be clear that once this is approved, we can continue on with our building permit so that we don't, aren't further delayed. We've already incurred over 40-some delay days and over $300,000 in costs due to the impacts of the rain. So the hits just keep on coming, but we're still here, and we're going to make this development successful and complete and provide families earning 30% to 80% of average median income, or area median income. Unfortunately, I think the presentation said 60 to 80, but we are actually from 30% to 80% in our affordability levels. That's going to create a lot of opportunity for families. I'll stop there and introduce you, my partner, Michael Johnson.
Thank you, Reese. First off, it's been, it's been great to be partners with Reese for the last couple of years working on this project. Good evening, Mayor Steng Allen and the rest of the council members and staff. I've been in development business for over 45 years. I started out working in architecture and then transitioned into development. The reason I mention that is because one of the primary things that we're deliberating on tonight is the design changes that have occurred since the original improvements. And I'm here, I originally wasn't scheduled to actually come up from the Bay Area tonight, but I weaved my way through two hours and 45 minutes worth of traffic to get here so that I could articulate some of the really important points about this revision that we have completed. This project is important to Reese and I because it's a legacy project. It is the largest single-tax credit project in the state of California at this time and represented a accumulation of over $320 million of capital that we were able to put together in order to close in September of '22. And we did that working together with not only everybody in this, in this part of the room here, but with our investors and our lenders. So everything that we have worked on in terms of refinements of the design includes consultation, not only with our architects and engineers, but with our capital partners as well. The situation we find ourselves in is that we're asking you to adopt the resolution tonight that would allow for the issuance of the final building permit. And with that is the approval of the design has been refined. The images that Sarah showed you on the screen looked fairly similar if you looked at them at a glance. And however, the types of changes that occur are really just, we believe, are subjective in terms of a person's visual evaluation of them, in terms of whether they are in some way negative. And we're here to acknowledge that none of our intent was to do that. We actually included in our property manager team a discussion about the balconies, a discussion about the pool, and made, in addition to some cost considerations, which there were other cost considerations that we had to take into place in order to balance the budget, the programming decisions that led to eliminating budget, the balconies and the patios and the pool. And those are program decisions that we believe, over the life of the project, will provide a lot of integrity to the preservation of the design, because balconies tend to be used for uses other than just standing out there and getting fresh air. There's a proliferation of storage of plants and so forth that generally make a lot of time, make balconies a lot of times unsightly and require an extensive amount of additional maintenance. And that's also an element that goes to both the pool and the balconies with respect to additional liability because of some of the other incidents that we've had in the state in Northern California where we've had problems. But with that said, beyond the approval tonight, we have had two meetings with the staff to discuss specific refinements that we want to try to evaluate over the next several weeks, with an eye towards just refining the buildings, particularly as relates to the visual impressions along the main public right-of-ways of Bruceville and Poppy Ridge, so that the appearance of the buildings in no way is sacrificed. We don't believe it is now. We're committed to the quality of what we're building, but we are willing to engage in, with our entire design team in looking at some refinements. In your resolution, you can see that some of the things that are being discussed, which is looking at the facades and determining where there are opportunities to step the plane of the buildings, you know, so that there's less of an appearance of being a flat facade, to make sure that the ends of the buildings, as they face these perimeter streets, don't look like the ends of the buildings. And through those types of stepping in the facades or changes of additional materials, where we already have different materials that we're using, we're using three different materials throughout the buildings, the 14 buildings, will add to the overall form being enhanced. The other area that we've talked about is at the parapet line, looking at potential, the potential of adding some overhangs at the parapet line and potentially stepping some of the parapet, so there's a little bit more rhythm. We already have a significant amount of rhythm in that of the 14 buildings. There is a variation in height, because we have some two-story buildings, some three-story buildings, and some four-story buildings that make up the, the buildings are on this 16-acre site. But we want to continue to look at ways that we can add some other rhythm to that site, to the buildings. We've talked about also looking at additional windows in certain locations. When we did eliminate the balconies, we actually added more windows, because the balconies, replacing the balconies, there's a door there. But the door was removed, and we have larger windows, and in some cases, additional square footage that was picked up in those units. So the livability of these units, which is what the tenants, built over 3,000 units, the tenants are mostly concerned about the livability of their units inside, where they will have full air-conditioned property, along with their heating. Those are the main things that the tenants are concerned about. Obviously, we're debating on the visual images, which is no more important to anybody in this room than the two of us, because it's part of our legacy of having a project that we can look back on and see and be very proud of. And the last thing that I want to, last two things that I want to mention is looking at additional planning and landscape in the buffers between the public right-of-way, back of curb, all the way to the face of the building. Most of these buildings are set back 80 to 100 feet from the perimeter of the public right-of-way. So it's not like their buildings are right up at the face of the building, as you have in some urban, urban conditions where you will, where you would actually potentially recognize changes in some of the elevation elements that we're talking about. But we're still going to investigate adding some of those elements in order to provide further enhancement. At the end of the day, following the approval that we hope that you do tonight, we are ready to roll up our sleeves with our architect, landscape architects, and civil engineer to look at these refinements and find a way to cover the costs together so that we can all continue to be proud. We had a great groundbreaking celebration, one of the best that I've ever been to, primarily because I think it was inside, and we didn't have to worry about the elements. But we, I want to assure you, and that's why we're here tonight, that we are going to make everybody proud with the construction of this project, and you will have no regrets from any of the changes that we're proposing. And it's not just a budget consideration, it was program elements that went into it, because at the end of the day, we have to manage this and own it for a minimum of a 15-year compliance period with these capital sources in conjunction with the state. So I want to thank you again for your time, and we look forward to continuing to work together.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Johnson. Thank you for coming out here from the Bay Area, and I appreciate what you, both of you talked about this being a legacy project and your willingness to work with the city to make it one that's, in my opinion, worthy of the residents of Elk Grove. I have a question for you in regards to the value engineering. What was their estimated savings by getting rid of the balconies and the patios?
Removing the balconies and patios was probably somewhere in the range, when you add in the contractor general conditions and overhead, probably somewhere between $2 and $2.2 million.
And in this project, you have a developer fee, how much was your developer fee?
To date, it's been zero.
But the schedule.
All had to be deferred. And so ultimately, the way that, the way that the California Tax Credit Committee allocates developer fees, between now and the time that we actually convert the building, which is when we will actually see some developer fee, there's a total of probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $4 million of developer fee that is payable to our joint companies. And then any remaining developer fee is distributed in cash flow over the remaining 15 years of operation.
If I understand, if I read the performer correctly, $22.7 million is your developer fee. About $18.7 million, as you said, will be deferred, leaving $4 million that would come upfront. And that $4 million is also eligible for contingency, is it not?
Yes. The unfortunate thing is that part of deferring that is that it becomes a source if there are cost overruns at any point. And then even the collection of additional deferred developer fees, all subject to, you know, cash flow and over time, the rise in tax credit rents, which are generally performed at, you know, 2% to 3% annually increasing, but then also looking at changes in operating expenses over that time period. So there's no guarantee for the receipt of those funds in the future.
I understand, and there is risk in that, in that $18.7. The $4 million is upfront, that is not deferred.
Yeah, and if you, if you look at that as a, as a percentage of the development cost of $220 million, it's about, you know, 2%.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, there's, there's, I heard mentioned earlier about, you know, developer profits being sacrificed in the interest of building or bait and switch on construction. That's not what's happening here at all. This is, everything that has been discussed with you is about trying to get the project built. And that, one of those things, normally, Darren, there would have been as much as 25% of that developer fee that would have been distributed at closing, but we had to defer that for what amounts to probably 24 months. And we were willing to do that.
I do appreciate that. You have deferred a larger amount than before. And so I, and I just, and we'll talk more later, but I just want to emphasize the city has worked with you and this project since the beginning. I mean, we've, we've been over backwards, we held a special meeting to adjust conditions. We've, we've, our staff helped in the performer to find deferment of fees that your company was previously not aware of. So we are there with you, we want to see this built. But at the same time, I just want to impress upon you, we want something that, you know, that is, in my opinion, worthy of the residents of Elk Grove. And I would, I would, and I'm going to repeat this later tonight, but I, I do believe that there is utility to balconies and patios. I believe the low-income and very low-income residents have a right to feel fresh air and sunlight on their face. And I think it's more than visual. I think there is value in people being able to utilize that space, as seen throughout many of the projects that are already here. And having said that, we hope, we really want to partner with you to make sure that we can, we can make those things happen. So I'll leave it there, but I appreciate you answering some questions.
Yeah, I'd welcome an opportunity to talk to you more about the merits of balconies and patios, because I've lived it from a management standpoint and operationally, and seen the pluses and minuses of it. And so we don't need to get into that tonight, but suffice it to say, we're not, we don't believe we're sacrificing the quality of the project at all, or the livability for the tenants by not including them. So that, that's, that's our belief, and we share that with our property management team, which is the largest property management company, you know, in the state, the Jon Stewart Company. So it wasn't a programmatic decision that we just, that we did just simply for. So it wasn't a programmatic decision that we just, that we did just simply for cost considerations. I want to assure you of that.
I understand, Mr. Johnson. I do have to say, since you brought Jon Stewart Company, while they're your management company here, they are owner on, on a project just to the north that I, as part of the Affordable Housing Committee, approved for city funds, they are putting balconies and patios on their project to the north. So I just, I mentioned that to you, but again, please, let's continue the conversation. And I'm going to defer back to the mayor so we can continue on.
Yeah, we'll hold most of the questions until we get through public comment.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And we have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I thought I'd speak before it became a 5-0. Such a familiar story in our city, developers telling us they just can't build it as approved, it won't pencil out. According to press reports, the developers received $153.6 million in tax-exempt financing for this project. I wonder if the state and federal bond administrators and investors are even aware of this latest effort to water the project down. How about hiring an independent consultant at developers' expense to audit their books and figure out why the project apparently needs to be watered down? If you approve this, our retail workers, teachers, restaurant workers who live in this three, four-story project will not be able to enjoy their private balconies or patios or even a swimming pool. And the only reason the four-story units have elevators is it is required by law and not negotiable. However, the three-story units do not. How would you like to carry groceries, car seats, and small children up three flights of stairs? With the loss of a patio and balcony, the residents not only lose a little private outdoor space, but the entire city loses much-needed articulation of the building design. This is a new low in architectural quality in the city. I urge the city council to vote no on this to help protect the livability and quality of life for our Poppy Grove neighbors. Remember, our Poppy Grove neighbors will be paying the 1% Measure E, Quality of Life Sales Tax Measure, each time they purchase necessities such as diapers and cleaning and household products. Lastly, during our general plan update, I expressed concerns about clustering our large affordable housing projects all on Bruceville Road and essentially segregating them from the rest of our community. I base this concern on what I observed and witnessed happening along Mac Meadowview Road when I worked there, when Sack County chose to segregate affordable housing. I was even assured by a staff member that Elk Grove would be different because we would require better design and standards. I encourage you to look closely at those architectural renderings in the staff report. Sadly, history repeats itself in Elk Grove, another bait and switch. And furthermore, all those changes he was discussing at the podium, I'm glad he drove over from San Francisco to share, but that's just discussion. I don't see it in writing or in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That is our final speaker for public comment on this item. I can invite the applicant back up, any closing remarks before our council will be discussing the item. So you have an opportunity to come back and offer any additional comments or insight, or you don't have to. No? Are we good? Okay, very good. Then I will officially declare the public hearing is closed and have a discussion here, council deliberations and direction. And since the project would be...
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I ask, before we defer, I think we're, I think we're going with which member, but could I ask our city attorney to explain the, really, the statute that we're up against here?
Sure.
If you could.
Sure. Council and council members, you're going to be happy to do so. So the relief being sought by the applicant here, which effectively removes the balconies and the patios, is a request made under the state's density bonus law. And under the state's density bonus law, the applicant can request what we call concessions or incentives from objective standards, objective design standards. The city has certain objective design standards which would provide for articulation of the buildings. And as the council will recall, the original plans did have those articulations and compliance with the city's design standards. The applicant is entitled to certain concessions, up to four, for this project, given the affordability. They've used one on the parking, they're asking for another concession for the articulation issue to remove the balconies and the patios. Under state law, the city is, is pretty tightly constrained in a situation like this in its ability to deny it. There are certain well-defined areas in the statute where it can be denied if the city has sufficient evidence to do so, including noncompliance with federal or state law or the non-reduction of costs. And I think the applicant has made the fairly credible proclamation that removing the balconies and the patios would reduce costs. He gave us some estimates here tonight. So in light of that, because it would reduce costs for this affordable housing project, the city is pretty constrained on its ability to say no in a situation like this under state law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll start with deliberations to my right with council member Brewer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming up here and presenting your case to the board tonight, Mr. Jaren and Mr. Thomas, I really appreciate that. We've been talking about this over the last few days, and, and I know you guys understood some of my frustrations with some of the, with some of the declarations of pulling away the patios and the balconies. I was also thinking about the storage spaces as well because a lot of complexes would normally come with the storage space on that balcony to the side, and it's small, but it's enough to store your essentials where you have, where you have room. And some folks would use the garage space should they choose to rent out the garage space as, as such. But with that aside, I understand, I understand the challenges that you came across because several years ago, storms took down my fence, I was relying on a neighbor to cover half the costs, that person welched on it, I had to pay for it myself to the tune of $6,152.38. And that still sticks to my craw today because when you go into an agreement and a person says that they're going to cover half or they're going to be in there with you for the long haul and realize that somewhere along the line, two, three weeks later, that's not going to happen, you just have to bite the bullet and do what's necessary for the benefit of the whole. One of the things that is another, another source of, of concern, but I'm able to live with it to some degree, is that you have a lot of new housing in the neighborhood that is going in, in District 2. And you have homes being built and being sold in the neighborhood of $650,000 to $708,000 to move in. And as people drive to their homes, the concern is, when they look at the design of Poppy Ridge as they turn into their homes, people are, will say, I, I didn't pay to move into a neighborhood where I'd have an apartment that may or may not look like my neighborhood, look like my home. And, and this is something that I'm hoping where we build our partnership, build our relationship between the city and yourselves and your consultants and engineers to help find some middle ground where we can help do some external facing to help make it more, 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 more home-like, not only for the tenants of, of the apartment complex, but also for the neighbors in, in the, in the area because, because when you're paying, when you're paying nearly a million dollars to live in, 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 in this portion of Elk Grove, which is the southeast portion of Elk Grove, when you drive down Bruceville Road, you want to see something that reflects your neighborhood and gives you that extra source of pride. And this is pretty much across the board with a lot of Elk Grove, but I'm talking about my district, which is the largest district of the four districts. You have a west side and you have an east side. And the folks on this side, they're paying, they're, they're paying a lot, they're paying a lot in their L&Ls, and they pay, they pay more for their park impact fees. And there's an expectation of when, in, in every neighborhood, but especially this neighborhood, where there's growth and continued growth, that folks will want to have that expectation of going into an area, a neighborhood, a development, a complex, to the Walmart Shopping Center. You want to see places that say, this is my neighborhood, this is my city, I feel proud to live in my city. And so, understanding all the dynamics surrounding some of the challenges that, that you face, I totally understand that. And it's just one of those things where we have to do what's right because at the end of the day, we just don't want to be in a position where we're behind the eight ball, feel like, feel like we're behind the eight ball, and more important, feel like we're in an acrimonious relationship with, with you. So we like to work with you in the process. And so anything we could do to help, we'd be there, we're there for you. But we definitely want to see the potential for, for, for help, for making these improvements and restoring some, some of the things that, that have been lost due to circumstances, but we definitely want to work with you in the process to make those things happen.
Council member Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank staff, thank you, Sarah, for bringing and presenting before us. Also, thank you to Reese and Michael for coming out here and speaking before the council. I just, I really want to voice, I was on the planning commission when I voted for this, and I believe it was a 5-0 vote, and when this came before the planning commission, we were super excited. We were super excited because this was going to be a groundbreaking thing that was going to occur in Northern California and especially in Elk Grove. I, I will say that I am, I am pretty displeased after seeing a little bit of the revisions, but I also understand that we're working, you know, on the partnership, and I really want to emphasize the partnership because I think as council members, as, as people in the community, we want to, we want what's better for our city, we want what's best for our city. We definitely want to set a standard, not only for affordable housing, but for market rate and for development. Setting standards is what is really important to me, and I believe it's really important to the council. I'm not going to speak for a lot of us, but I think a lot of us have high standards. I guess for me, you know, looking at whether it's balconies and all that, I mean, how many other cities where balconies have been taken, been taken away look like Elk Grove, right? All our affordable housing projects in Elk Grove have balconies. And I would actually ask the city, has there ever been any code enforcement that has gone to the balconies and how many complaints have we had from our residents on balconies being used as storage?
Council member Robles, I'm not aware of any code enforcement nor any management company working with Sarah on complaints of balconies.
Okay, thank you for that. And I guess for me, kind of understanding us also, what council member Brewer was saying, you know, this is an area that's being developed, that several homes are being constructed and currently being built. I just, it's not about the affordable housing not being developed, we want to see this, we need to see this. This is something that we desperately need in our city and in our region. And we are, again, I'm super excited about it, but I am displeased that it's not going to look like what it's looked like. I'm not complaining about the pool, I'm not complaining about the basketball courts, more so the aesthetics, and we want to make people feel comfortable. I, you know, I say thank you because it's 30 to 80% of the income, right, that we're looking at, who we're going to be helping out, thank you for that. But I also think that, you know, there's a little bit more that we can also do, and if, if we as a city can do something, we as council can do something to partner, like, let's do it. Let's, let's do it. It's a legacy project, let's help you with that legacy because we want to make an impact in our community, and we also want to make it feel safe, especially for the community who's going to be living there. It is the most vulnerable community. It is those folks who are working two to three jobs that can barely make it, who probably don't even have healthcare, right? We want to provide all this accessibility, but we also don't want it just to be something that's going to be a box. So I know that the bonus, the density bonus is mandated by the state, and I know that it's an uphill battle, and I know that that's coming from top down, right? But we want to be these partners for you from the bottom up. So if there's anything that we can do to make sure that this is an absolute, one of the best projects that we can deliver, you said 387 units, 387 units. If that's not Elk Grove stepping up, then I don't know what is. But we also want to make sure that this is a great standard so that the rest of the region can look at Elk Grove and be like, we need more of this. So I'll leave my comments for there right now and let my other council member speak.
Thank you, sir. Council member Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I, I'm tempering my frustration because, you know, I recognize this is a large part in the state's laws that we're contending with that don't give us much say. I, I feel like this is more of a formality than, than ability or an actual review. So I, I'm tempering my frustrations, and I'm also hopeful because I heard you say you wanted to be partners with the city. So I, I'm really hopeful because we, as, as the community member that was up earlier or spoke earlier mentioned, yeah, we don't have anything in writing, again, because the state laws that are forcing us into this predicament. But it's also incumbent upon you gentlemen, as the applicant, how you choose to use those state laws. And I, I would hope that you would sit down with us in good faith in trying to bring back these features that I do believe are the patios and the, and the balconies, as my colleagues mentioned before me, that are, are important to the community. And to clarify, the city is not a financial partner at this time. So otherwise, we would, we would have more to say about this project, but we are not a financial partner. We, I mean, in my, for me personally, I'm willing to be, and that's why I'm happy to, you know, have these conversations. And I, I just want to be clear, my, my questioning earlier, you know, $4 million in developer fee and $2 million that you would get upfront in deferring the rest, but the $4 million you would get upfront is also allowed to be used as contingency, building contingency. And I heard you say there's $2 million, $2.2 million for the balconies and patios. So, you know, to be, make it simple, you know, I, I would conceptually like to see maybe if the city, we could talk to you about financing part of it, and I know, you know, you, you know, taking a hit on the developer fee would be a big deal, but, you know, that's part of the conversation that we, we could be having as partners. Again, bringing, making this project one that is truly representative of what our residents deserve in Elk Grove and looking 10, 20 years, this is your legacy project, 10, 20 years, 30 years down the road, it, it will be something you will be proud of. I believe all of us up here know our residents, we know our community, and we've seen the projects, other ones that have been built throughout this city, they all have balconies and patios to some extent, and our residents, you know, deserve that much. And so, and, and the residents that aren't there yet deserve to look at something that is, that is palatable. And I heard, I know you said a subjective, but I would say for the residents here, from the projects that we've seen that were built in the past, and, you know, I, as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, as the longest sitting member on this city council, I'm, I'm telling you, those features are important, the, the patios and balconies, the ability, or the opportunity to be able to sit in the sun and, and enjoy fresh air is important to our residents. So I'm begging you, please, work with us going forward. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Spies?
I'm twice disappointed, right? One, relative to the fact that, and I know people are going to consider this something that, you know, that I would say all the time, but I am very disappointed in the state of California, where they bind our hands to deal with issues like this. They bind our hands to the point where we have to approve this, or we face consequences. Very disappointed in that. The state has stripped away local control. It is wrong. And my hope is that those of you, anybody who's out there listening, and I know there's very few, that you start voting smarter at the state legislature, because this is a result of the votes. Please consider voting smarter at the legislature. Second, I'm really disappointed that these patios and balconies are being removed. I'll agree to disagree with you that, that you claim that there is no loss. The honest thing, if I'm being honest, and I always hate to, to, to say something like this, because I know it's going to insult an architect somewhere. But with these changes, the designs are reminiscent of monolithic designs that we have, that we have stopped doing years ago. I just don't like it. Now, on the other side of it, that's one thing, but the other side of it is, these are residents who deserve light and air, open space. They deserve to have the air blow through their, their homes. They deserve to be able to sit out on the balcony and, and get the sunlight. I'm very disappointed. That said, because I'm disappointed in two things, I recognize the only way forward is to work together. I hope that we can find a way to do so, because I don't think anybody wants this as a legacy project as the way it looks. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, the benefit of going last is that I get to hear what my colleagues have said and maybe try to summarize it somewhat and then opine within that. We've heard a lot about balconies. And, you know, there's, we're focused a lot on what we might be losing, as opposed to maybe having a reverse discussion of what is it that we could be gaining? The design element, I, I do appreciate the subjective nature of it. You know, some houses come with balconies and terraces. Mine doesn't. I go outside to enjoy my fresh air. I don't have the balcony. And it wasn't, for me, what was important was my house and my backyard. So everybody has their own biases of what they like and don't like. And I'm not sure that, without any true data, to say balconies enhance quality of life, what enhances quality of life? I mean, that, that's, that's a big discussion. I heard a little bit about livability of the unit spaces being larger. Larger spaces for families, that's a quality of life issue. Aesthetically, they're very different. And I've had the benefit of having several discussions with the applicants. And so some of my initial shock has waned, because I've had lots of conversations in that I think there are opportunities before us for enhancing the aesthetic appeal, whether it's balconies, on a, what, I mean, there's, there's a lot that we can still look at. I don't know that we need to be married to say only a balcony. It's balcony or bust. I would like to see a balcony, but I would, you know, but the idea of having a larger space has merits in and of itself. One of the things that we're, you know, that perhaps all of the other units, other affordable housing units, and I don't know if the answer, I'm going to pose it out there, how many of those units that we have have washer and dryers within the units versus a common space? Do we know that data?
I don't know that, that data, but I can get that from Sarah.
Okay, because having one's own laundry unit inside, that's pretty compelling. That's not only quality of life, but that's just very practical. And versus going to a common space where there might be lines and so many other issues. Like, it's like going to a laundromat.
It's unique, it's unique.
Yeah. It, it is unique. And so I'm, you know, so I'm talking about those things that stuck out for me. That's, that, that is, you know, something that definitely has merit. I appreciate that the market conditions have changed and all of that, and the legacy project, I think is very important and compelling. What I understand, you know, in hearing, I, I hear the frustrations, and I share your frustrations, colleagues. But I also know, in these frustrations, we have an opportunity to partner, to have conversations, and to actually build something, that's something that we can all be proud of. I know for, you know, you don't have to be here, because the law is on your side. But the fact that you choose to be here also speaks volumes to me, that you are trying to do right by the city, and you want to partner and work with us, because as part of that legacy is collaboration. It isn't about doing this alone. And I know that our city welcomes collaboration and input. And while this may not be the best way that I would like to have seen this unfold, we are where we are. And so where we are is an opportunity. And I know that with staff has discussed, there's a, we have some language, and I don't know at what point we plan to discuss that, so that there is a good faith effort on both sides to continue this beyond today. Because in terms of what we do need, we need those 387 units. That is absolute. We must meet our affordable housing challenge. And it is imperative that the big goal, we can't lose sight of that. Every city has to do its share, and we absolutely will step up and do our fair share as we continue to do so along the way. So I am confident that the city will work with the applicant to enhance and beautify the project. I would like to, do we have the, the language? We should be looking at that, because that is something that makes me feel comfortable. It will help me sleep at night, knowing that when I leave here tonight, I'm walking away with a partnership, a partnership between the applicant and the city. And in that opportunity, that relationship, relationships are an investment in each other. And that's where we have our opportunities to provide our input beyond the approval process. We know what we must do, but we also know what we can do. And we appreciate that you're here, willing to sit with us and have those conversations. If we can pull up that slide.
Excuse me, I prepared a revised condition to replace what is in your resolution. Condition number one could be replaced with something similar to this. It's a two-part slide.
So, so I would ask staff, if you could pull up the actual resolution that we've prepared, do you have that available, so that the council can see exactly what they're being asked to consider?
I would need to put it onto the, I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So well, and, and that resolution is important, because that establishes what we're talking about, that relationship, the conversations that will continue, because everyone here wants to do right by our community, as you saw in a previous presentation with our Trails Committee, of how much pride there is in our community for not only connecting Elk Grove, but the beautification of Elk Grove. And we'll be talking about that even in another presentation later this evening. We have tremendous pride in our city, and we, we're, you know, this, we don't want this to be a concern, not only for us, but for you. Because as part of that legacy, we want you to succeed and have the best project. And knowing that this is the largest in, in the state of California, that, that's exciting. That's exciting for me as a mayor, that that's happening right here in our city. So those are tremendous opportunities that, that I'm focused on, and how we can make this better. And as you've heard maybe even earlier, our other affordable housing projects, if you were to talk to residents throughout the city, can you please point out where the affordable housing projects are, what they look like? You won't get a lot of people who, who can tell market rate versus affordable housing, because we blend in and integrate within our communities. And that is probably the bigger concern that I've heard as a unifying theme, is that consistency, that that is something that, you know, we spend a lot of time on, and that is part of our expectations back from everyone, from all of our developer friends. Do we have, are we ready for that?
Yes. Here is the revised condition as shown in the resolution.
And if you don't mind reading it out loud, for those that either can't read it or see it, I don't, I need my glasses, I can't even read it. But this is a, you know, what this, to me, is sort of that blueprint of where do we go from here? And that is a good faith effort on both sides to sit down after today and continue to have conversations to enhance and make Poppy Grove a beautiful project. And that's what everybody wants. We're all on the same side. We're all, we all have the same end goal. And that's the most important element to remember. We all share the same exact goal.
Madam Mayor, I also would like to just hold each other to a high standard. I think that that's, that's like the one thing that's, my key, hold each other to a high standard. I, I don't think it's necessarily just a balcony. I think it's making sure that the future residents who will be there will understand and appreciate that they have a home, right? It, it's, for me, it's different, because I grew up in a low-income family, when my mom earned 725 an hour. So for me, this hits home, because I, I didn't grow up in a house, I didn't grow up in, in a home that's, you know, worth now 400 to 500,000, I didn't. So for me, this, this is something, you know, people, whether they're low-income, whether they're middle-income, they take pride in where they live. They take pride in where they live. So for me, it's just holding a high standard. And I, I sincerely really want to be a partner, so please, I, you know, just as Councilmember Suen said, I am begging you, please, reach out to us and let us know what we can help, where we can do that. Because, you know, there's different areas and avenues where we can also speak to people. And it's not just about making a speech, it's about being there with the people. And this is going to go in, in obviously District Two, but it's going to go in Elk Grove, and it's going to go in an area where, where it's going to be there for generations. And we want to see this legacy come fruition, but we also want to hold a high standard. So please, again, we're here to partner with you.
Madam Mayor, if I could build off of that, you know, to the high standard component, two decades ago, the affordable housing industry came a long way. It, it, it demanded that builders put in services and features that are commensurate with market rate products. So, because why should someone who is lower income have to, you know, live like they were lower income? Why would they not be eligible or entitled to have, you know, similar quality of life amenities? And it's, it's gotten to that point. And so my subjective feeling is that not having those, those elements would go backwards, as Councilmember Vice Mayor Spies mentioned earlier. I understand, speaking with industry experts and people that are building affordable products today, that the cost of construction is actually coming down because of the mark, the softening of the market rate projects, because the, the supply chain issues for materials are being resolved. And so to that end, I would like to include with, with consensus of my colleagues, the consideration of putting back the, the balconies and, and patios. I, I see a lot of things about parapet walls and projections and facades, but I still would like the opportunity to have a conversation about putting the original project as was originally approved at the planning commission, as was originally approved at the council back in May of 2022, back on the table.
So I think within here, it's, it's, you can still have those discussions within these parameters.
I don't think it's clear, Madam Mayor. I would just adding a bullet saying, adding back the, the patios and balconies as was originally approved as an option for a conversation.
And these are just conversations, this isn't, yeah.
Just want to be clear about what, when you say rolling it back, are you talking, you're not talking about rolling it back with the pool and the other thing? You're, you're simply speaking relative to the, to the patio and the balcony.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah. It would be great if all of it back, but I, I get it, I know, but that's, that's what I'm, that's, this is me working too, right? We're not asking for everything, but the important things.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And just for everyone's context, this, these are conversation pieces. We all know that, that these aren't, this isn't like, okay, this is happening. These are, this is a, an understanding that we're going to continue having conversations. So that everybody's under, you know, is, in terms of meeting your expectations. You want to go ahead and read them?
I would be happy to. Development and operation of the proposed project shall be consistent with the project description and project plans as provided in Exhibits A and B, adopted with the Poppy Grove Apartments Amendment Project, PLNG 23010, incorporated herein by this reference. With respect to the architectural and landscape design, the applicant, in consultation with city planning staff, shall give good faith consideration to the following additional design considerations. Evaluation of opportunities to create more relief in the elevations by adding projections to the building facade to create greater stepping in the plane of the buildings. Evaluation of the opportunity to add overhangs at the roof level and vary the heights of the parapet walls. Consideration of options for changing materials and adding additional windows in designated areas of the facades. Providing additional plantings at designated landscape buffer areas to reduce the scale of the building and enhance the visual appearance of the property. Enhancement of programming of the current open space in indoor common areas to enhance the overall living environment for our residents. The applicant shall review the above identified design considerations with their architect and landscape designers, in consultation with city staff, with a focus of enhancing the elevations along the main perimeter streets adjacent to the public right of ways. The city may, but shall not be required to provide additional funding to the applicant to defray some or all of the costs of design revisions. Any city funding shall be subject to any and all applicable laws. The applicant may submit revised elevations and site plan for review to the planning department. Final elevations and site plan shall be subject to approval of the Development Services Director. Deviations from the approved plan shall be reviewed by the city for substantial compliance and may require approval amendment by the appropriate legislative body.
Thank you for that.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, thank you, Sarah. We say funding, but in, and I'm trying to remember, in, in our affordable housing projects, do we describe it as funding, or do we describe it as financing?
I will defer to John on that question.
I, I'm not sure I recall off the top of my head, but they're really synonymous. It really doesn't make that much difference. Financing would be a form of funding, and funding would be a form of financing. So I don't think it matters either way in the context of this condition.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure. And then secondly, could you please explain to maybe folks watching at home or in the audience, why we're not able to create something that is binding or mandatory through this resolution?
Well, it's, it's the same issue that we discussed before. In light of the fact that the applicant has requested, and based on the record, appears to be entitled to incentives from the objective development standards, that relieves them of the obligation to put in things such as balconies, or patios, or other articulation in the facade. And so that's one of the reasons why. And as, there's been some discussion, both by me and at the council level, state law has some strict mandates when it comes to review and concessions of the objective design standards that the city has imposed. City can have objective design standards, and we do, but given certain projects such as this one, which has 100% affordable housing component, doesn't even need to have 100%, to get the concessions, but because they have that, they get it. doesn't even need to have 100% to get the concessions, but because they have that, they get additional concessions. That's why there's a challenge of putting a mandate of things like the balconies, the patios.
Yep, and we're relying on their good faith in this.
So what this condition does, and we should probably get to a moment to your suggestion, Councilmember Sue, about the additional condition, but what this condition does does not bind them to really do much of anything. What you have is their good faith commitment that they will work with the city and work with city staff to see if there are additional design components that would improve this project.
Thank you.
So to the other point, I heard your suggestion to Councilmember Sue and to add an additional bullet point about the possibility of bringing in balconies and patios. I don't know if I heard at least three council members in support of that. Of course, if the council wants to do that, I have some language that I can suggest to the council. What I would suggest, once we get through all this, is bring the applicant back up and receive their commitment on the record that they agree with these provisions to work with the city along the parameters we've identified, wherever we end up.
Right, Councilmember.
Look to my colleagues.
So John, just to help, just to help out a little bit more, I mean, we're developing a non-binding agreement. What are the benefits of having a non-binding agreement? Because I understand it gives both parties flexibility in negotiating with each other, talking to each other and pretty much figuring out what can be done within the realm of feasibility. But from a legal standpoint, what are the benefits? What are the pitfalls? Where are the areas of in-between?
So I think you've identified most of those in your comments. What we essentially have here is an agreement to try to agree without any commitment by either side to actually reach an agreement, but an acknowledgement by both sides to come to the table, they, that they will work on some design commitments. The city, that we may consider some other alternative or additional funding that might help get them where they need to go, with neither side being obligated to do anything at the end, but to come to the table and discuss and talk in good faith. That's what we're essentially acknowledging and they're acknowledging through a condition such as this.
And with the bullet points that are expressed on screen right now, they pretty much handle all the different things that would, that we would like to see without spelling it out specifically. Because if we do spell it out specifically, there, I mean, there will be, there could be some things where the party could say, no, I don't agree to this, thanks, but no thanks. And the whole benefit of this is to have something that we can all agree to, shake hands and move forward, correct?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I'll keep it simple. I just, high standards and let's be partners. That's kind of where I.
Would you agree to have the original, basically the original project be on the table to talk about? That's all we're saying.
I think what you mean with respect to the balconies and.
Yeah, the patio, sorry, yes, yes.
I understood what you meant, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
See, I feel like it's implied in there. If you need it spelled out, I don't have objection.
I would support it being spelled out. I mean, we could ask for a spaceship to be developed and that's not binding. None of this is binding, right? However, it is a placemaker that says we would like to have the conversation about the patios and the balconies. And I think, given that it is non-binding, I feel no harm in putting it in there. So I support.
So I heard two. Hope we have a third.
The agreement we have on screen, I think suffices. If we go any step further, I think we run the risk of jeopardizing what we're trying to work towards. Period.
Councilmember Robles?
Continue to say, for me, it's being held to a high standard and making sure that we are partners in this. Because this is going to get built and it needs to be of good quality and it needs to make sure that we, the people who are living there, we're thinking of them. Who are future residents of Elk Grove, who are futurely going to contribute to Elk Grove, who are going to make a difference in Elk Grove, who will eventually even run for city council here in Elk Grove, who will be on the Planning Commission for Elk Grove, who will be our future educators, our police officers and our fire department. So I'm saying we need to continue to hold each other to a higher standard. I'm going to keep on saying that, and I want to be a partner and I'm here to help. Let's do this.
Because this was developed from both sides, I'm going to accept this with knowing that I will be bringing, myself, we'll be bringing up balconies in the discussion. But this was agreed to, to come before us, so I'm comfortable with this, knowing that I personally and others, and then, you know, please also be part of the discussions and bring it up during that time as well.
So.
I'd be honored.
That's, that's fine. Mayor, if I might, I would ask that you suggest the applicant come back up. I know they've seen this language, just to confirm that they've seen it and that it's acceptable to them?
So without any other further, at least at this time, that would be, the next opportunity is for Mr. Johnson or Mr. Jared, if you would like to come back and, I guess, offer any additional comments and then also if you can provide some comment on the resolution that I believe we've both created.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I appreciate the discussion and I think it's important that you recognize that we are here and we didn't have to be. And we are here because we do want to partner with you. And we are here with this language that we have no obligation to insert into this motion. And we're agreeing to it as written, and we look forward to working with you. As you well know, Darren, we worked hard to try to get the city to participate with us financially on this project and it didn't happen. And we said that we desperately needed additional funding to make this work. And in spite of the fact that the city couldn't do it, and not that you didn't want to, it just didn't happen for whatever reasons. We still were able to cobble together sufficient financing to close this development and it's going to be built in the city of Elk Grove. And it's going to be something that we both will be proud of. And we hope that by this discussion, we will enhance our relationship. Because by my standards, it's been a good relationship. We've both given and taken and benefited from this relationship. And we have a place to go now to enhance that. And I appreciate all the time. And Michael and I are committed to the city of Elk Grove and to this development. And you will continue to see that as we walk through the completion of this for the benefit of the people that will live there and to the city and to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other further questions or comments? If not, I will look for a motion. You'd be reading item one and two.
Staff recommends the city council receive information from staff and comments from the public and adopt a resolution that would, one, finding no further environmental review is necessary under the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to Section 15162 and Section 15183 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations. And number two, approving the design review amendment and density bonus with an incentive concession for reduced development standards for the Poppy Grove Apartments Amendment Project, PLNG 23-010. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the draft resolution. Does that also include what we just saw?
And Councilmember Robles, let's just clarify that that would include, I assume, the revised resolution that was presented to the council tonight. Am I correct in that assumption?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. May I get a second?
Councilmember Robles here, second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or objections, abstentions? All right, I heard all ayes. All right, thank you, thank you. Does if anyone needs a break, just take one on your own. We'll just keep moving otherwise. We're going to keep moving right along and move on to item 8.2.
That's a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the city of Elk Grove zoning map and resolution approving a tentative subdivision map extension for the Creekside Estates project. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Joseph Dagman, Associate Planner in Development Services. The item before you is the Creekside Estates Extension Project. This project consists of a rezone to amend the zoning designation of approximately 7.79 gross acres from the agricultural residential 1 AR1 designation to the low-density residential RD4 designation, as well as a 36-month time extension to the previously approved Creekside Estates project, which would subdivide the 7.79 acre parcel into 15 single-family residential lots, one open space lot and one drainage lot. This time extension would extend the expiration date of the tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout from February 12, 2023 to February 12, 2026. And the project would remain subject to all conditions of approval approved as part of the original project. The project site is located at 9350 Bond Road, on the north side of Bond Road, approximately 355 feet east of Waterman Road. The site is currently developed with a single-family residence that is to be demolished as part of the approved project. The project is surrounded by residential uses to the north, south and west, while the property directly to the east is vacant. Just a little bit of background on the Creekside Estates project. On February 12, 2020, the city council approved the Creekside Estates project, which included a rezone from AR5 to RD4, a tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout to create 15 single-family lots and one open space lot and one drainage lot, as well as one tree removal for one tree of local importance. As part of the city's general plan zoning consistency program update, the city rezoned several properties around the city to align site zoning with general plan land use designations. Though the subject site had been rezoned to RD4, consistent with the Creekside Estates project, the subject property was inadvertently included in the zoning consistency program and rezoned from RD4 to AR1. So to move forward, we are here to rezone the property back to RD4 and make it consistent with the original Creekside Estates approval. This project was reviewed by the Planning Commission at its March 16, 2023 meeting. No issues or concerns were raised. By a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Singa being absent from the meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project to the city council. Here is just, here's the, a map of the approved Creekside Estates project. Just a little bit of background, access to the site will be on the northern side of Bond Road through a right-in, right-out access. As you heard earlier during the Trails Committee update, there is a trail that wraps around the perimeter of the project site. And also, I did mention that one tree of local importance was approved due to its location in the future alignment of the bicycle trail. Before you is the rezone exhibit. We're rezoning it from AR1 to RD4 to be consistent with the approved density of the Creekside Estates project. RD4 is consistent with the estate residential designation of the general plan. The Subdivision Map Act allows for an extension as long as city-approved extensions do not exceed six years. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed time extension would extend the life of the map till February 12, 2026. This is the first extension requested by the applicant. So if the city council tonight approves this extension, there will be 36 months available afterwards. This request is, this requested time extension, 36 months, is consistent with the Subdivision Map Act as well as the Elk Grove municipal code. No further environmental review is required pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15183. This project is consistent with the general plan and environmental impact report. So staff is recommending approval of the rezone and recommending approval of the time extension. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is open and invite the applicant to speak if you wish.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor, city council members, we're just here, my partner and I, requesting the extension of this opportunity to hopefully see it one day take place for the community itself. I want to say thank you for the recognition of the trails as well as we do believe that these trails will be beautiful for the community itself. Other than that, we're open to ideas, comments, too. Thank you.
I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments from my colleagues here? All right, seeing none, look for a motion number one.
Still moved?
You have to read it.
Number one, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only. An ordinance finding no other environmental review is required for the Creekside Estates rezone and map extension project pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15183, and approving a rezone for the Creekside Estates project, PLNG 23-002, assessor partial number 127-0140-040, and to adopt a resolution finding no other environmental review is necessary.
First one, and then go into motion two. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And for that one, you can just say motion two.
And we'll just say motion two because you already laid it out in the slide presentation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is also yours.
Take it away, Joseph, you're already there. Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Joseph Dagman, Associate Planner in Development Services. This item is the Sheldon Road 711 Determination of Public Convenience or Necessity. The project consists of a determination of public convenience or necessity, also known as a PCN, to allow the Sheldon Road 711 to upgrade from a Type 20 to a Type 21 alcohol license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. The Type 20 allows for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption, while upgrading to a Type 21 would allow for the sale of beer, wine and distilled spirits for all off-site consumption. The project site is located within Laguna Marketplace Shopping Center on the southeast intersection of Sheldon Road and Lewis Stein Road. The site is currently developed with a Chevron fueling station, with a 711 convenience store and an attached car wash that is currently operating, as I mentioned, under a Type 20 ABC license. The applicant has provided a floor plan. Currently, beer and wine are currently displayed and sold in four refrigerators on the sales floor. That is toward the upper right of your, of your screen, of the floor plan. If the Type 21 upgrade is approved by the council, the distilled spirits will be restricted to a small display shelf, approximately four feet by five feet, behind the sales counter that is only accessible to store employees. ABC requires an applicant to obtain a PCN when the establishment is located within a high crime area, which is a crime reporting district with a 20% greater number of crimes reported than the average number for all districts and/or when the census tract is deemed over-concentrated by ABC's standards. Elk Grove is separated into 26 sectors for crime reporting purposes. The Elk Grove Police Department compiles crime statistics in seven areas that are outlined in their report and included as an attachment in your staff report this evening. The project site is located in Subsector 2102, which had 394 crimes reported in the year 2022. The average number of crimes reported per subsector was 116. So it exceeds the 20% and is considered in a high crime area. Additionally, the project site is located in Census Tract 96.39, which considers any more than two licenses to be considered over-concentrated. There are currently nine active licenses in this census tract, so it is currently designated as an over-concentration. The city council determines whether public convenience or necessity will be served by the issuance of the alcohol license for the applicant's premise based on the following factors. Number one, the proximity and number of the retail outlets selling alcohol. Number two, the proximity of the retail outlets to schools, playgrounds and other facilities serving young people. Number three, the proximity of the retail outlet to residential neighborhoods and. finally, number four, whether the retail outlet provides, A, a wide range of desirable goods and services, or B, a unique type of goods or service. And I'll describe how, I'll describe each of the scenarios in this, this slide. So here is a graphic depicting the proximity to some of the mentioned uses. There are currently two off-site licenses in census, census tracts ninety-six point thirty-nine within the same shopping center as a seven-eleven. Those would be the Sheldon Liquor and Food as well as the Winko Foods. The Lot Petite Academy is located on the southeastern end of the shopping center. However, as a childcare facility, all children are picked up from the facility by an adult and would not have unsupervised access to seven-eleven. The nearest public school to the project site is nearly half a mile away, which is the Irene West Elementary School in the city of Sacramento. The nearest park is the Elizabeth Pinkerton Park, which is approximately thirteen hundred feet south of the project site. And then while within proximity to residential neighborhoods, the northern side of Sheldon Road, as well as the western side of Lewis Stein Road, the existing fueling station and convenience store have been in operation under a type twenty ABC license since nineteen ninety-nine and have existed prior to the establishment of these neighborhoods. While seven-eleven operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, their current ABC license type twenty allows for alcohol sales between the hours of six AM and ten PM. If the upgrade to a type twenty-one license is approved, the hours of operation for those, for the sale will, will continue. Finally, the current use of the property allows customers to fill their vehicles with fuel while purchasing everyday essential items, while reducing the number of trips they may otherwise make. Seven-eleven offers a wide range of grocery items and house, household items. The nearest fueling station and convenience store is nearly half a mile away, so we believe a unique type of goods and services are being offered and provided here. The police department has reviewed the project and determined that there is no public safety reason to oppose the finding for public convenience or necessity and the associated ABC application. The applicant has committed to implement ongoing staff training on safety, security and sales of age-restricted products. The project is exempt from the, from SECO pursuant to section one five one six two, sorry, one five zero six one B three, granting this PCN will expand the services at the existing, at the existing shopping center, but will not bring any physical change to the environment. So tonight's staff is recommending approval of the upgrade to a type twenty-one license. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I will declare the public hearing is now open. The applicant is welcome to come and speak before we take public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bruce Evans for seven-eleven. We also have Jeffrey Gin with me tonight. He's the market manager for seven-eleven for this market and the franchisee who owns this particular store, Paul Verk, is also here with me. I know it's been a long night. I'm happy to answer any questions in light of the favorable staff report and no opposition from the police. We're going to forego the presentation. I would like to thank staff for their professionalism throughout this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll hold off on it if there are any questions once we get to public comment, but thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity, and we have Ms. Sharon Anderson.
Long meeting. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment. I'm Sharon Anderson, and I'm also part of the Elk Grove Anti-Trush Community Cleanups Group. And as you know, we get into the weeds in different properties, literally into the weeds. One thing I would recommend, I know it says no significant environmental change or no significant environmental impact, but this facility, this particular property, and I'm sorry to say, I wish I knew you before I came up to the owner, but it is a disaster. It's a mess. There's always trash in it. There's trash through the, what you might call it, the car wash everywhere. Every time we've cleaned up that area, we've done what we call a karma cleanup, where we clean their property for them because it's such a blight. It's just the, all the bushes that surround, you can find the NIPs, you know, the little tiny alcohol bottles. I wish they wouldn't sell them ever. We should look into creating an ordinance in our city like Boston is looking to do or Brooklyn is looking to do to ban NIPs because they're a huge blight. They're, all their bushes are loaded with cans. There's all kinds of stuff embedded in there. We've reported it to the code enforcement. Sorry, I, I wish I knew you before, and so I could let you know how horrible it is, but I would say that for public safety and all of the other things, adding another alcohol license in that area is just going to add to the trash and the, and the crap that they're, obviously their customers are the ones that are causing it, but they need to clean it up. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Any closing remarks from the applicant? If not, I'll declare, oh, yes, please.
I'll just say, if there is any concern about the trash from the residents, happy to pass on Mr. Verk's cellphone, Mr. Gin's cellphone, my cellphone, and if there's something that needs attention, there's always room for improvement, we'll deal with it. I'm not aware of that issue. We haven't had any complaints, but if she thinks it's a problem, we'll do our best to address it.
Thank you. Thank you, that, that's nice.
If you could exchange emails or phone numbers, you're just right there. Just exchange those and life would be here.
Reach across the aisle.
And we definitely appreciate you doing that. It, it does, it is a significant problem in that area. There are a number of businesses there, so I can't, I'm not, I'm not poking at any particular business, but it is a significant problem in that area, and we would appreciate your partnership in helping get that, get fixed up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll declare that the public hearing is now closed, and any questions or comments from colleagues here? All right, seeing none, I look for a motion then.
So moved. Do I have, where is it? Do I have to read it?
No.
Nope, you don't have to read it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. All right, on to our next item.
Item nine point one, to consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, chapter three point zero eight, Uniform Transient Occupancy Tax.
Good evening, Mayor St. Allen and members of the city council. My name is Cara Taylor Seaman, and I'm the Finance Manager for the city of Elk Grove. I am here this evening to present information related to the city's collection of transient occupancy taxes and remedies to collect on delinquent taxes. I will also present information about a proposed change to the city's uniform transient occupancy tax. As far as some background information on this, the city's municipal code allows for the collection of occupancy taxes from hotel, from local hotels for stays of up to thirty days. The tax rate for local stays is twelve percent of the rent and is paid by the guest and collected by the hotel owner or operator. The tax is considered a debt of the owner and operator and not that of the, the hotel guest. At the end of each month, at the end of the month following the hotel stays, then also all hotel owner/operators are required to report and pay taxes to the city of Elk Grove. In case there is a delinquency or the hotel operator does not remit payment to the city, the Elk Grove Municipal Code provides specific collection options that are available to the city. Those are interest, penalties, written notice and legal action. And then throughout that process, operators may request a hearing or appeal for any taxes, including those penalties and interest. To supplement the current remedies and ensure that all taxes are paid, staff has reviewed the current options and recommended a recordation, two, two things, a recordation of a lien on the property as well as successor collections. So if the property is sold, then the new owner/operator is required to notify the city and then pay that delinquency. The staff recommends that we introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and the ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code, chapter three point oh eight regarding this tax. And thank you, I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone sign up, I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions, colleagues?
And your city clerk would ask under the motion, and I apologize, under the, the notes in the script, I don't have this highlighted, but I would ask that you actually read the whole motion for this ordinance, for the motioner. Thank you.
We have a motion. Yeah. We have to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, chapter three point oh eight regarding uniform transient occupancy tax.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is nine point two.
Is to receive a presentation with information on a potential city entry identification program and identify, provide direction on next steps, including preferred designs, preferred locations and budget parameters.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Jeff Warner, your Public Works Director. I'm here this evening to talk to you guys about the potential city entry identification program. First, a little background, back in August, the council expressed interest in considering placing monuments at city entry points. Currently, the only entry monuments are along Highway ninety-nine and pictured here to the right. We have many more high-traffic entry points that lack significant signage, and it, given that the city continues to distinguish itself in its safety, service, quality of life, progression to add some additional entry monument signs may be a natural progression for the city. In order to prepare to bring this item forward, staff went through the following steps, including identifying existing signage and other monuments throughout the city to establish existing seams, themes and branding. We identified very, the variety of options that are available with examples from other jurisdictions. We looked at potential entry locations and assessed feasibility for placing monuments or entry identification, and we estimated the magnitude of the costs. We do have a few existing monuments throughout the city in addition to the ones that are at the interchanges along Highway ninety-nine. We have several wayfinding signs that were installed back in two thousand and sixteen that guide travelers throughout the city to points of interest. We have some signs, or some large signs at the entryway to District fifty-six pictured here, and we also have the large event advertising signs that were installed in two thousand and eighteen as part of a pilot study to explore ways to encourage folks and inform them about events happening throughout the city. All three of these signs pictured here conform to the city's branding color scheme, and that was obviously purposely done. There was actually a, a wayfinding sign program that was established, and the, the theme and color scheme you see was part of that program. The variety of entry identification options are vast. They range from large scale to small scale. The large-scale options include walls, arch signs and other large signs and monuments such as digital message board readers. Those are less common, but they are used and do typically sometimes include branding for your city, but they typically inform people about traffic conditions and/or events that are happening. Medium-scale options include the, what we call tombstone options or, or kind of more, more than just your standard sign, potentially surrounded by landscaping or other amenities, beautification options, and then small-scale street signs and banners that can be simply produced and announce entry or exit from, to and from the city. These are some examples of large-scale monuments from other jurisdictions. These are, these are the wall variety. They're ideal for major points of entry. You often see these at freeway exits. In fact, the two from Seaside and Marina are both right off of Highway one. They are highly visible to incoming traffic. There's many options that you can consider. They may definitely make a statement, depending on what you decide to do with them, however they come at a high cost. These are the archways, several famous archways throughout our, our country, including the Reno sign. Again, they're ideal for entrances along major roads. They're, they do create a passageway for vehicles, and they're seen both by incoming and outgoing traffic. They are somewhat limited in their materials and configuration, although you see the one from North Kansas, which looks pretty handsome, in my opinion, and has some lighting aspects to it as well. They definitely make a statement, but again, come at a high cost. Medium-scale designs can be placed in medians or along road sides in landscape corridors. They, they definitely can make a statement of, of their own and are suitable for high-traffic locations. They can, they can be placed near parks and other areas, so they're very versatile in that regard. They also have versatile design options and materials. They can be placed on concrete, surrounded by flowerbed, in existing planters, et cetera, and they're, have a medium cost range. These small-scale design options are just your typical signs and banners. There, there are a lot of placement and design options, simple, effective and inexpensive. In fact, they can be done in-house, as elaborated on in, in the staff report. They utilize, they can utilize existing infrastructure like streetlights, further minimizing the cost and the ease in which they can be applied. They have a variety of lighting options that can be applied as well, and, you know, they may not be as impactful as the other signs, however, they do come at a much lower cost. Several lighting options here from non-illuminated to internally illuminated, and the, the cost goes up with each option. So non-illuminated, again, no to low cost, depending on what you decide to do. However, our typical approach for non-illuminated signs would be to apply them on a reflective background so that they are lit up when the headlights, vehicle headlights hit them. Externally illuminated is your typical, you know, lights in the ground that are shining up on the sign or landscaping. They can be wired or unwired with the solar option, and they, they can cause a glare on the sign. That may be a small concern, however, it, it does exist. And then internally illuminated, which doesn't necessarily have a solar option, except in some rare cases, typically, so typically requires a wired approach and thus requires special monument or sign design considerations, but it can provide a very sleek and modern look, as we saw with the arch sign, our District fifty-six sign, which is internally illuminated, and depending on how much you want to spend, is, is a very nice option. We looked at a variety of locations, primarily on I five, at our two interchanges there, similar to ninety-nine, as well as along the northern border. These are the more densely populated areas where we share a, a border with the county as well as the city of Sacramento. Walk you through some of the options at each location quickly. So location one is the off-ramp of I five at Okra Boulevard in the eastbound direction. So site number one would be suitable for a street sign or a wall design. Number two is in the median, and number three, again, is off to the, the side of the road, again, suitable for a street sign or a wall design in that location. Location number two is the other off-ramp at I five, Laguna Boulevard. Again, three options, two off to the side of the road, one in the median, with option number two providing a, an idea of what it might, where a banner might go.
Is that the signs or?
What's that? Oh, yes. I thought about making a comment, but you did it for me. I wonder if those are still there. Darren?
No.
Location three is Franklin Boulevard, the Franklin Boulevard entrance to the city at Big Horn Boulevard. There's a couple of options here, including the, the corner of Big Horn and Franklin Boulevard, as well as the median, and then there are streetlights. And I think all locations, as mentioned in the staff report, would, would have a streetlight nearby, so the banner option is pretty common and could be applied at most of these, if not all of these locations. Location four is Bruceville Road at Sheldon Road, again, shared, shared border with the city of Sacramento. And if, I'll go back a couple of slides and show you, I wanted to highlight this, this first image in the top left, Welcome to the City of Sacramento, that actually exists on Bruceville Road just north of Sheldon Road. So that's, that's their announcement of the entrance, leaving Elk Grove into the city of Sacramento. That's this green and white, green sign with the white writing. So again, this, this would be, because there's some utility impacts in the corner here, as well as a future development, undeveloped corner, we are only looking at the median in this location at this time, as well as the banners. Location five is the Location five is the Genie Point Drive at Power and Road. Median and small landscape option there, in this little landscape corner. Location six is Elk Grove Florin Road entrance at Calvine Road. Again, you have your median option as well as your corner option. And then I also forgot to mention that the archway option is, of course, an option at the majority of these locations. However, they can become pretty expensive and are quite impactful to a lot of this existing developed area. Didn't want to leave that off the table, though. Location seven is Bradshaw Road at Calvine Road. You have some roadside options here. There's no median at this location, so those are really your only options, in addition to, again, the banner. We would. There's typically a 12-and-a-half-foot PUE there that would allow for signs, such as the one you see here. And actually, another important thing to point out here is, this is what we have out there already. This is the "Welcome to Elk Grove," but it's just your typical population, you know, entry sign marking the city limits. And then location eight would be a potential future location. We threw this in here because this is along the Capitol Southeast Connector, which is pegged for a future roundabout. Obviously, much more study and analysis to do before that ever comes to fruition. But certainly, with any roundabout option, you could consider placing a very robust monument in the center of the roundabout as a statement in welcoming folks to the city. I mean, the locations, there are several additional locations, right? We could look at Camera Road. We didn't necessarily explore those because a lot of, those are undeveloped at this time, and so I think...
With Wilton and Grantline, of course, you would give one of the roundabouts, whatever that iteration looked like.
Yes. In fact, several roundabouts throughout that corridor, right? But yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I think, you know, again, you want to make sure, well, you could consider, right, placing them at, again, all of these locations. We focused really on high-traffic-volume locations. That would be less of one, and I think the folks down there, kind of, they would know where they're at. I don't know if you're trying to make a statement transitioning from the Wilton area to that area, but perhaps. Your call. Estimated costs for large-scale options can exceed $100,000 each. Medium-scale options range from $25,000 to $100,000 each. And then the smaller-scale options are going to be less than $25,000. Just for some context, the wayfinding signs that we did, we did 37 of them back in 2016, and they averaged about $10,000 each, and this is construction costs. And then the two event advertising signs in today's money would be probably about $50,000 a pop. So, for council directions and next steps, all that depends on the feedback and the direction you guys want to go in. For a large, medium-scale program, we would need to hire some consultants to assist us with the programming and the design. We would develop a bid package and hire a contractor to construct those signs. For a small-scale program, we could very likely develop that program in-house and design the signs using our fantastic graphics design team, as well as our new sign shop out at the courtyard. We could fabricate and install those signs ourselves. So, these are, this is what we need to consider and what we need to hear from you. If you do desire to move forward with an entry identification program, what elements should we consider? Is it only signage? Do we want enhanced landscaping? What types of freestanding signage and/or banners do we want to include? How much do you want to spend? Should the new signage be consistent with the existing city wayfinding signs? Again, the three options that I presented are consistent with that branding. However, the interchange signs on 99 are not, so that's an interesting contrast. And then, if you have any other comments about the design elements or locations, we'd love to hear about it so that we can know how to move forward. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone sign up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. We'll start to the left this time. Thoughts, comments?
Well, I guess...
It's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah. And, I mean, on one hand, I feel like if we do something, I don't, I mean, I saw some of the banners, and I just don't feel like, at that point, why do anything at all, right? And...
Not the banners.
Yeah, so trying to manage costs, I mean, I personally feel like when you're exiting, the interchanges at Elk Grove and Laguna Boulevard are, it's kind of self-explanatory, so I don't know that anything is needed there. But I do see you could do something along, you know, the streets, Franklin, Bruceville, you know, Elk Grove. And so, those, I would be willing to entertain something in the medians, you know, and a medium-type of thing, and as well as I recognize a Grantline one as well, where people are driving and you have no idea when you're entering. So, those are my thoughts.
Well, let's see, I can peel down the questions here. Yeah, I think we do need an entry identification program, right? Elements, I would prefer to go in on the less expensive side first. I think you can add enhanced landscaping later, perhaps. I like the, I like the medium as opposed to the small or large. Locations, I mean, I'm not necessarily worried about the Calvine one or the Wilton one. However, if you could, oh, let me, I can look on here. Hang on a second. Oops, went the wrong way, of course. Well, but then the questions won't be put up there, so I'm good. I just need to find, there we go, okay. As Franklin enters Elk Grove, right, at the intersection of Whitelock, essentially, right? Maybe we could do a small sign there, right? I mean, it's lower traffic, but...
Oh, you're picking another spot, down Whitelock, yeah.
Because when I looked at this, I kind of went, oh, man, this looks like a, like a fence. And I don't, I don't want a fence. I want this, I was initially thinking of this as an opportunity for people to know when they were coming into something. That said, I don't think the traffic coming up northbound on Franklin is terribly significant, right? So, I don't, I think we could do one of the smaller signs in that location.
I think for a lot of those locations, we would recommend, I mean, maybe it weighs out, but waiting for camera to come through. I mean, you're going to have an extension of Franklin or Willard down south there, and, you know, people are going to be coming up from the county into that area. But we can certainly consider something now, smaller.
Right, yeah. So, and what was Bruceville, as it comes up? Because at first, I said, well, jeez, the only entries are on, you know, on the north and on the west, but that's not true. Wilton's there, right, as I mentioned. But anyway, in those locations, if we're going to do something, it should be small, right? I definitely think that the signage should be consistent with the existing city wayfinding signs. I don't, I don't want something, I don't want something large and gaudy. I want something that, of course, is nice, makes a statement, but is simple.
Clean.
Clean, right. You know, nice, that's what we want to have, is a nice, clean city. I think a clean design works well. I do need to, before I forget, pilot study, event signs. How long is pilot study going on? And is that coming back as a different item at some point? Because there's probably some...
Somehow, I knew you were going to ask that question. You know, right now, you know, we don't have any, I would say, meaningful data to know how those are impacting our residents. I don't, we don't have any complaints or concerns. They are being utilized, and we've actually brought that program in-house with the new sign shop. We're able to fabricate those signs pretty easily. So, I guess we would likely want to bring back an item and perhaps seek city council direction with a little bit more information at that time. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it popped up right before the pandemic, and then there was 18 months of essentially nothing, right? But...
Yeah, and during the pandemic, I think we saw a really, a lull, right? So, we didn't have the full impact of what those signs could create. And I think we, as our events come back, we're starting to see perhaps some usage. And I was going to ask if Kristen was still here, maybe she has some more information for us.
We can certainly bring back some data, but honestly, there is not as much paid advertising request as we were probably expecting from that. So, the city is always looking for content, and we pursue those opportunities with our grantees to see if they're interested in advertising on those signs. But it's a chore to keep them current.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Maybe that's something we need to bring back and decide whether that continues or not. Because I'm not, while I'm, while I'm sitting here being a proponent for signs, I'm also a proponent for effective signs. And if they're not being effectively used, then they should likely come down. But that's my only opinion. Anyway, I'll park that for now. All right, so, let's see. I think I gave you all the answers to the direction. Is there any other questions that... I really believe that it's important for us to have a sense of place, a place to know where, when someone is coming in, I hope that they look at the signs and say, "Okay, I mean, this is a good thing, right? We've got clean streets, thanks to volunteers, and more, you know, more assistance through operations to get, to keep the streets clean." And I just, I want folks to be proud of where they live. I don't believe that it has to be at every section or every place immediately. We could do some sort of phased design, right? But, I mean, I appreciate you bringing back the item, and I'd definitely like to pursue more. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
In looking at the report and listening to the ideas and the concepts, they sound good, but I have to come back and say, is this a need or a want? Because we could use our, we could use our funds for other purposes. But I like the idea, but the only thing is, is it a need or a want? Because when you go down, because when I get off the highway, off of Highway 99 going down Elk Grove Boulevard, I see banners saying "safe city," "vibrant city," "diverse city." Going all the way down Elk Grove Boulevard, when you cross Elk Grove Florin, you see the sign for "Welcome to Old Town Elk Grove." And you see it on the other bookend when you come in, off of Waterman, going down Old Town Elk Grove. And when you go further down Elk Grove Boulevard, coming towards District 56, you see the banners for all the veterans. So, you get that sense of community pride right there, and it's amazing to see. And I love the community of Sheldon. I would like to see a sign there. But then again, it's like we're trying to talk about one city, one Elk Grove. And as much as I like to see signs for specific neighborhoods throughout the city, especially like the signature neighborhoods, I get where we want to have a sign. We want to have signage that emotes public pride. Because going in and out of Highway 99, you see the two signs, and then we're going to have the big digital sign, and I can't help but notice when you go, when you go past those digital signs, you're going to see some signage or logo that will indicate you are in Elk Grove. Now, coming off of Interstate 5, coming off that bend, there's no signage there. And it's usually reserved for political signs on Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna. I can't talk too much because I'm guilty of having signs there and having the mayor, once upon a time, pointing to one. But we should have some signage coming off our major through fares. So, when people come in, no matter they're going west or east, they know they're coming into the city of Elk Grove. And I would strike out the large-scale signs right out of the gate because those are just too big, too gaudy, too much, too expensive. The small-scale signs and banners, if we're going to go small, why go at all? And so, the medium-scale signs, they're nice, they're compact, but the one that I would definitely take off the board is the Fountain Valley one because you missed that altogether, and we already see something like that when you say, when you're going down North Laguna in that part before you come in off the Valley High area. So, it's like when you come into Elk Grove, you want people to know they're in Elk Grove, and you want to have something that speaks to the pride of the city, whether it's a scaled-down sign of what we see on the highway or something that looks like our logo and banner in back of us, something like that. Because you want people, you want people to feel good when they come into Elk Grove, especially off our main streets and roads that get you into the main through fares of city, of the city. But I guess the real question I have to ask, is this a need or a want? Right now, right now, to be honest, neither, neither.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Brewer, please.
A lot of signs, huh? I honestly, I'm looking at the large ones. I don't even think the large-scale ones are that appealing. I, yeah, yeah. No, I mean, it's, they're not as appealing, at least to me. And then, I would, I agree, the middle ones, the middle-scale ones. Could we get something more not as old-looking, I guess? You know, this really looks very outdated.
This is the direction we're seeking.
Yeah. Honestly, I like our District 56, right? I like that. It's, it's simple. It gets straight to the point, and then in the evenings, it's lit up, right? Folks can see it, and it's simple. You know, I think that's kind of where, if we do go this direction, that's kind of where I would want to make it, something more modern.
Thank you. I like the idea of signs. It's great branding for our city, particularly as our city continues to grow. It's a matter of sort of where those key areas would be. I definitely am in favor of the medium-sized signs, the banners. I don't want it competing with what we already have, honoring our veterans and so forth. So, answering the need versus want, I guess you put that out there. I think, from a branding perspective, from marketing, it would be a need. Because as our city continues to grow, so does the branding. We, particularly as we grow, we will have very distinct areas. Project Elevate comes to mind and things like that. So, but where and when, and the timing, of course, is critical. I am in favor of looking at a mid-size sign. I don't know that I have a favorite or any that stick out, but something that is more unique to our city and our own city's branding.
Do you like the sample that's in here? It kind of, it kind of goes on me.
The sample's not far off, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. So, I guess the big, the first question is, are we interested? I think that there's at least three or four. I'm not sure where Councilmember Brewer landed.
Yeah, we don't know where Rod is right now.
I'm not sure on the need or want.
As much as I'm being the Grinch, I think you have persuaded me that there is...
Excellent that I can be persuasive at this late hour. Thank you. So, I mean, if you're looking for direction, I think it's worth pursuing. It's great for the branding of our city, the identity of our city, particularly in those neighborhoods as they continue to grow. They're great focal points.
To my colleagues, what do you guys think about the, basically, at locations 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, just as a pilot?
Yeah, and I like that, what you had mentioned, sort of that phased-in approach, so that the hit isn't all at once. It's really where the most robust needs are, and then growing from that standpoint. So, I don't have that map in front of me right now.
Locations again, Councilmember Sue.
So, Franklin, 3, Bruceville, 4, skipping 5 because I think you didn't like that, Councilmember Brewer. And then Elk Grove Florin and Bradshaw, and then Grantline.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Three, four.
Yeah, yeah. When you get the roundabout thing going.
The sample's in the staff report.
So, are we saying, how many? Four of them?
One, two, three, four. Well, five total, but eight's going to be future, so really four.
Sure, sure. So, the part of the pilot...
They're going to be doing a study based on what we're talking about tonight, so the number could be different based upon the budget when they come back.
Right, right. You're just going to go look at mid-size, looking at price points from the median versus the corners.
Narrowing down the locations will help with the price, though, because if you don't want it a place, we're not going to investigate the cost of lighting and irrigation, all the other stuff. So, if you just, you know, if you can narrow it down to those, whatever one you want, then that'll, that'll reduce the scope of work for the engineering work.
I'm good with what Councilmember Sue and... I'm good with what Councilmember Suen, are we good with that? Okay, as a pilot, and to get back more feedback from us.
Yeah, because later on down the line, obviously, we want to look at eight. But I definitely, down the road, I definitely like the possibilities of one and two. Because when you come off of I-5, you're coming right into the, into the city. And that's something you definitely want to see coming in.
I love the signs in the rural community, entering the rural community. Those are nice.
Yeah.
So just for clarity, it looks like we're considering four locations, and the other one would be the future location. Or do you guys want to throw an eight now, put something out there now?
I'm good. Yeah.
Which would be, yeah. Three, four, six, seven, eight.
Three, four, six, seven, eight. Medium-sized sign. You guys liked the sample that was shown in the staff report. And in other words, kind of try to, that really does try to conform to our existing branding. It would, it would be consistent. What about lighting options?
I liked in here, you said internal solar, so low maintenance.
External, external solar.
I'm sorry, external solar, so it's low maintenance and solar.
Don't have to bring the wiring or utilities across the median or anything like that?
Yeah.
Is that enough direction for this aspect?
I believe it is. I just want to make sure we have everything.
Those questions, because I no longer have that on my screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we could, so we could bring something back based on that direction.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Council, well, Vice Mayor Spies, for being a champion for that. Next item, 9.3.
Consider resolution adopting the mission, vision, goals, and priority projects for 2023, 2024, and amending the governance principles contained in Elk Grove City Council norms and procedures manual.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Christopher Jordan. So this is the follow-up from your retreat last month, at the first part of March, to update the mission, vision, goals, priority projects for this next two-year cycle of '23 and '24. And then per your discussion at the retreat, updating the norms and procedures relative to the governance principles. We will maintain the four goals that are outlined in your packet. These remain the same as from the prior two-year cycle. No changes to those. For the priority projects, these are as presented at the retreat. There are 35 projects in total, covering the five categories seen here of civic amenities, transportation, community development, community safety, and city operations. Where are the governance principles? You asked to have items four and five consolidated, which meant old item six became five, and then you added a new item six. So no change to these first three here. Item four is the consolidated of four and five that you previously had, focusing in on being concerned about the issues regardless of district and keeping district representatives informed as a courtesy and in the spirit of no surprises. And you directed new principle number six at the bottom, mindful of our responses to the media and follow procedures from such responses so that we have a unified voice on city issues. So that concludes the presentation. If you have specific questions about any of the projects, we can go over those.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay, drilling deep into the report here. There was a, there was a slide that was presented, and I think some folks may have misunderstood the intent of the slide, right? And the slide was related to priority projects and the council input informed by the priority project list. And it listed a number of things, recreational and civic amenities and community engagement and, you know, address climate issues, et cetera. And I think what I want folks to be clear of, excuse me, is that while these are listed in an order, they are not necessarily in order of the priority. I'm deep down on page eight. So I want people to understand that when you look at something that might be on the top left, that does not mean it is in the first position. So I just, I just wanted to caveat that, and I'm sure nobody's even listening to that. But this would not be the way that I rank priority projects. And that's not what this is intended to do in the first place.
You are absolutely right, Councilmember, that this is a list of those things that are most important. There is no internal ranking beyond. It's simply these 35 or so items are the most important of the 2,000-plus-or-minus items we do on a daily basis.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Excellent. Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, sure. Oh, I have to look at that.
No, you don't have to read it all, just motion.
Oh, motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 10, council reports. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles, anything to report?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Brewer?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Suen?
We had our sanitation district meeting today. Councilmember Robles and I.
Forgot.
Where we adopted a resolution to move forward with the Harvest Water Project that'll hopefully bring tertiary treated water to restore our aquifers in our ag land.
I get super excited about the Harvest Water Project. That's why I forgot. So, thank you, Councilmember Suen.
That's it, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, good, I was just saying, that's it.
I have nothing to report.
I will sack our team meeting. I'm trying to think if there was another one since our last other council meeting. Well, that's probably it. But I do want to recognize our volunteer appreciation event was very well-received, and I wanted a shout-out to Kristin for all the hard work. I got so much positive feedback from everyone, and it, the gratitude from our board members and commissioners did not go unnoticed. They were just so appreciative to be there and recognized in that way, so, great, great job. Before we get to the adjournment, I do want to adjourn in the memory of somebody. Steve Miller, who was a member of the Citrus Heights City Council for 17 years, and then just recently in November, was elected to the San Juan Unified School District. He did pass away suddenly, and so would like to adjourn in his memory. He was a great regional partner for many. And may his memory be a blessing to all that knew him. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.